Good morning all, welcome to the August 15th meeting of the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Villalobos. Will you please call the roll and make the TV coverage announcement?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria, and Orca areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV. And now for the roll call, Commissioner Blau.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Valencia.
Here.
And Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
Thank you.
And thanks to you. Good morning, Ms. Black.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning we have three items on our agenda and we're ready to move forward with all three.
And for the projection report?
For the projection report, we are not scheduled to meet again until September 5th, so we'll have a few weeks off. On the 5th we have an inclusionary housing ordinance status briefing as well as the demographic data presentation. We have State Street Hospitality scheduled for your Commission's review, and the Park Hill Estates project is scheduled for your Commission's review. The projection report indicates that the St. George Del Pla Apartments will be coming to your Commission, however, I think that's going to slip for some time and we'll put that on your agenda for a future date. September 12th we also are scheduled to meet and we have two projects on that date, the San Inez Airport improvements, as well as an appeal of an oil drilling project. We've indicated that September 19th is a date to potentially cancel your hearing. I think it's likely we will be able to do that, but we can revisit that on our hearing on September 5th. And then you can see, in October, we have two hearings with items scheduled for them. October 10th we're holding as a potential hearing to cancel as Commissioner Blau won't be attending the hearing. And then all the way into December, you can see there's lots of blank hearings and we expect some of those to fill in, but on December 5th, we do plan to bring the inclusionary housing ordinance to your Commission for a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. That's all I had to highlight this morning.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, seeing how the September 12th date is somewhat light, and so is October 3rd, I'd like to go ahead and vote that we cancel the September 19th hearing and make plans to do a little vacation that week, so I'll move that we cancel the September 19th hearing.
That's fine.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Just so that we can, you know, it's, I don't want to wait till a week before the hearing, then cancel it, then not be able to make plans to go do something in that week, so this is kind of the vacation season, so that's all.
Any other comments? Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, I think it's fine to go ahead and cancel it.
Okay. I suppose if something earth-shaking occurred, we could always talk about a special date of some kind.
Uncancel it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Black, for the projection report. This is the opportunity we have on every agenda for members of the public to address the Planning Commission with public comment not related to, at least not directly on today's agenda, so we would invite anyone in the hearing room today, or in Santa Maria, to address the Commission at this time. Are there any speaker slips for public comment? Ms. Commissioner Blau?
Yes, I believe there is.
Mr. Field, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and staff. I'd like to just very quickly point out and thank all for a sentence that's been added to the routine agenda at the Planning Commission under public comment, which says, "When testifying before the Planning Commission, personal attacks and other disruptive behavior are not appropriate." Now, that sentence has been on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for as long as I can remember, and I'm very, very pleased to see it adopted here. Now, in my wildest dreams, you would never have to pay any attention to this, but those are my wildest dreams, so my real hope is that if we do have a recurrence of the personal attacks that seem to be increasing in the country, I don't want to pick on Santa Barbara County, that this policy will be enforced. And I want to thank staff and any Commissioners who were involved in that for accomplishing it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Field. Anyone else for public comment? All right, I don't see anyone else rising, so I'll ask if my fellow Commissioners have any informational reports. Mrs. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, last week, the district supervisors of the 4th and 5th District had all the combined Commissioners and board members of committees attend a luncheon at the Vets Memorial Building in Lompoc, and everybody, every Commission got up and gave a very small report, which was appreciated, because I guess there's about 19 boards and Commissions that each one appoints, and that's a lot of people. But it was very interesting of some of the timeframes that some of the people, they asked the question, "How many have served over 30 years?", and I think there were a couple that have served over 30 years, and there were many people committed to serving the community. They had from 30 years, they came down to about 15 or 16, I think I was about 3rd or 4th, and then it went down to, there had been some that had just been appointed in the last couple of weeks. So there's fluency, and there's a turnover from time to time, but many of the people have served at least 10 years, and it was really nice to hear all their little reports. And I thanked the Supervisors for encouraging all the Commissioners to come in and meet, and many were surprised that they were Commissioners, "I've known you all so long, I never knew you were serving", so, very interesting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Valencia. And I know the Supervisors on the South Coast from time to time get appointed Commissioners together. It hasn't happened in the 1st District for a while, so I'll prod Supervisor Carbajal with the benefit of doing that down here. So next we have the Director's Report, and this morning we have Dr. Russell. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to start by announcing a public meeting regarding revisions to the winery ordinance. It's going to be held August 23rd at 6:00 p.m. in the Buellton Marriott, and we're going to have a moderator from outside the department to run the meeting, and I think this is going to be a very important meeting, certainly not the only meeting, but a very important public meeting as we start to move forward in this process once again, and we invite everyone who is interested in the subject to attend and contribute. As far as the hearings, since your last hearing, which was last week, it was just yesterday, and there were two items of interest, I think, to your Commission on yesterday's agenda. One was the final abandonment of whatever sliver of easement rights we still had in the COVID issue on Cavalletto, and although there was testimony, public testimony, that this was a resource that the county should value and not give up, however limited it may be, the Board did decide to basically abandon that once and for all. So there was a sort of a tenuous right, if you will, left there, and now that has been pretty well extinguished. And the second thing was the appeal by Mr. Salentine of the Browns Riding Arena, which your Commission heard several months ago, and at the last hearing on July 10th, we were instructed by the Board to bring forward findings of denial of the project and uphold the appeal. We did so, and the Board adopted those findings yesterday, so that means that the appeal of Mr. Salentine was upheld, the land use permit was denied, and now the Browns will need to move forward, and we'll be working with them in terms of a new land use permit, which will basically effectuate the emergency permit that we gave them to unburden the comb line. So we're going to be working with the Browns to see what kind of a solution we can find to this problem. So it's still a problem that requires a solution, and we hope that we can find that solution in the context of the next land use permit. That's all I had to, this morning. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the Salentine appeal, I presume that with a new land use permit, that depending upon what the Browns do, or what their application is, that Mr. Salentine could appeal that as well? Is that...
Chair Cooney, Commissioner Brown, yes, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Chair Cooney. Dr. Russell, I'm wondering if, going back to the public meeting regarding the winery ordinance, would it be appropriate for the county to notify some of the cities? Because there were several public meetings, or there was a resolution that was brought before several of the city councils, and the idea was that the stakeholders, you know, wanted to be included in the process, and, you know, this is going to be an important meeting, and, you know, should the city levels that took action on this resolution be notified, and perhaps they could make it public to their constituents?
Chair Cooney, Commissioner Brooks, it's a fine idea. We'll make sure that that happens.
With respect to the winery ordinance, Dr. Russell, is the ordinance in draft form at this point?
Chair Cooney, no, it is not. We are, we are going to, the next phase of the outreach is to receive input from the public on issues, and once we compile that, then we'll take that to the public, and only then will we begin to draft an ordinance. So we're still a couple of steps away from actually drafting an ordinance.
Okay. And with respect to the Browns' project, it may be too soon, but I recall when this Commission considered the matter, one of the concerns, certainly one that I had, was that it was not appropriate to apply a SEQA exemption to the project, so I assume staff will take another look at that and determine whether some environmental review would be required.
We will. It's a new, it'll be a new permit and a new process, and when we find out what it is that they would like to do, we will carefully evaluate that issue.
Great. Any further questions? We appreciate you coming. Thank you very much. That brings us to the first item on our standard agenda, the temporary uses ordinance amendments. Let's take just a five-minute break to transition, and we have some recently submitted correspondence that a couple of Commissioners are catching up on, so we'll start this hearing promptly at 25 after. This is the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting of August 15th, 2012, Feragosto, and we've reached item one on our agenda. I'll ask Mr. Villalobos to read that into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department that the County Planning Commission review and provide recommendations to the Department on 12 ORD 2, an ordinance amending Article 34.4 of Section 35-1, the Santa Barbara County Land Use and Development Code, and 12 ORD 4, an ordinance amending Division 2 and Division 7 of Article 2, the County, Santa Barbara County Coastal Ordinance, with the purpose of the ordinance amendments being to modify existing regulations and implement new regulations regarding the use of property for temporary uses, special events, and make other minor clarifications, corrections, and revisions.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Black, you and Mr. Langle will be presenting today?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Mr. Langle's going to present the detailed staff report, but I thought I would just kind of remind the Commission of where we are on these ordinances. So these ordinances came to you last year. Your Commission decided that they needed some additional work, and asked us to work with a loosely formed group of people to help advise us from the community and from the event industry, and we've been working on it, but I wanted to kind of step back even further than that and remind the Commission of what we were initially trying to accomplish, and that was really to clarify the distinction between commercial and non-commercial and charitable events on private properties, residential and agricultural properties that aren't engaged in the winery business. So it was really to address those sorts of events, and our ordinance already has provisions addressing the events, so we're really trying to fine-tune our event ordinance to address an issue that has arisen with short-term rentals of properties. Because on larger pieces of property, non-commercial and charitable events aren't regulated by number, on parcels over five acres, people were and have been renting their property out for short-term use, and then the people who have been renting it have been using it to host parties, weddings, et cetera. And that really wasn't the intent of the ordinance when it was adopted by your Commission and by the Board of Supervisors in 2004. It was really to provide some level of use of the property that's ancillary to a residential or agricultural piece of property, so you wouldn't expect somebody to hold an event at their property every weekend of the year. And some of these properties have been used that way through the short-term event rental. So we're really trying to continue to allow non-commercial and charitable events accessory to residential and agricultural uses through these ordinance amendments, and we're trying to continue to provide a discretionary permit path for commercial events on residential and agricultural properties. It's really pretty simple what we're trying to accomplish. It's very complicated when you go through the ordinances, so I thought I would at least set that out at the beginning. We are addressing the winery ordinance, as your Commission knows, in a separate work effort. That public part of that work effort begins next Thursday at the public meeting that Dr. Russell announced during the Director's Report. So with that, I'll turn to Noel, and he'll go through the staff presentation, and I guess I would encourage the Commission, if you have questions as we go along, to ask them, because there are a number of issues that might arise, it might be just more efficient to address them as they come.
Okay, just before you start, Mr. Langle, and good morning to you. I know we've all had a chance to review the ordinances, this being our second time through with this hearing. We have had a lot of public input, both in written form and individual contacts with people on one side of the issue or other, or another, and we want to get to those public comments as well. So I just remind the Commissioners that we're not going to be able to answer every question upfront, but hopefully in the course of the hearing, we'll get our questions answered before we move to make our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Ultimately, the Board will have its separate hearing and an opportunity to hear from the public before it looks at the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair, you just reminded me of another point I wanted to make, and that is, we actually aren't asking the Commission to make a formal recommendation to the Board of Supervisors today. The Montecito Planning Commission heard these ordinances at their hearing a few weeks ago in July, and they did not conclude their hearing on Article 2. They had some questions and gave us some direction, so we'll be going back to the Montecito Planning Commission at their hearing in September, and then we would come back to your Commission for a formal recommendation to the Board. So we're really looking for direction to try and help us get to the point where we can bring ordinances to your Commission that you feel comfortable forwarding to the Board.
Okay, and then I would just mention for everybody's benefit that we do have some time constraints on our meeting today. We do have to finish by early afternoon, so we're going to have to limit the amount of hearing time we devote to this item. I don't want to set it up in advance, but if we could move with alacrity through the presentation and the questions from Commissioners, we'll make sure that everybody in the public that's taken the effort to come down here will have a chance to address the Commission. So again, good morning, Mr. Langle.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the County Planning Commission. Diane sort of sets the stage for you regarding the recent history of this ordinance amendment. I would like to go back just a little further. When we amended the, what was in the zoning articles, Articles 2, 3, and 4, to provide regulations that would address people holding special events on their property, be they either a charitable or some other non-commercial type of event, or a commercial type of event where they rent the property for use for an event venue of whatever nature. The ordinance currently, the County Land Use Development Code, the Montecito Land Use Development Code, and Article 2, the County Zoning Ordinance, contains all sections on what we consider to be temporary uses of property, and these address things like rodeos, circuses, swap meets, things like that. And one reason that the actual ordinance, I think, seems complicated to a lot of people is that I'm also using this opportunity to go through the County Land Use Development Code and delete all the references to the coastal zone and coastal zone-specific regulations, because as you're aware, the County Board of Supervisors chose not to accept the Coastal Commission certified modifications to our development code, and so Article 2 continues to live on as our certified coastal zoning ordinance, and I'm taking opportunities that I can to extract the coastal zone regulations from it. Essentially, in 2004, where we did amend the articles to include regulations for special events, we did so in response to a number of people that were holding events on their property for charitable purposes, but there was always a question as to, well, how are these actually addressed in the ordinance? We looked at it and said, well, really, they're not specifically addressed. We'd always assumed that these, and determined that these events were more or less an ancillary or accessory use of the property to the residential use of a property, where a person residing on a lot allows a charitable event to come onto their lot and/or hosts an event for a charitable organization for a fundraiser. We also had situations where a person would host a political fundraiser for one party or another. So in order to provide some sort of ordinance framework for these types of events, we did amend the ordinance to provide regulations for special events, specifically charitable and other non-commercial events, that were to be exempt from an ordinance, from a permit in most situations. However, we also put in regulations at that time to address people that wanted to regularly, routinely rent their property for commercial purposes to provide an event venue. The latter case, the commercial use of the property, the ordinance allowed that this could occur subject to the approval of a minor conditional use permit. And the purpose of the minor CUP was to craft conditions of approval of that permit that would make that commercial use appropriate and compatible with the neighborhood, when typically these would occur within residential or agricultural settings. So the conditions could address things like limitations on hours of operation, traffic, parking, things of that nature, that if not conditioned, could rise to nuisance levels of impacts to the neighbors and lead to incompatibility with the overall residential or agricultural use of the property. So as Diane mentioned, 2011, we presented a general package of ordinance amendments. Included in those amendments was an attempt to change the regulations regarding charitable and other non-commercial events, to address the situation where a person was renting their property to a third party, and then claiming that since the third party was holding the event, it didn't constitute a commercial event, and therefore should be exempt from As a result of the public testimony that occurred during those hearings, your Commission, both the County Planning Commission and the Montecito Planning Commission, directed that we should work with special events and neighborhood representatives to review the issues, and then come back in 2012 with revised ordinance amendments. And so we did that. The working group that we formed, as Diane mentioned, was a loose association of people. It had changing cast of characters, depending on who could make the meetings, who couldn't, and it was, you know, really, the initial group was formed out of people that had testified at the Planning Commission's hearings earlier. I contacted several of those people and said, "Do you want to participate in a group?", and several people said yes, and several people said no also. But we met with a working group on several occasions to discuss the issues, and the conclusions of that group was that we should maintain the existing tiered permit system, in other words, keep the separation between charitable and other commercial events as being exempt from permits in most instances, and to retain the discretionary permit process for commercial event venues. But to assist people that wanted to routinely use their property or rent their property and for events, was to develop an application package that would be specifically tailored to special events, so that the, this would address one of the complaints that we heard during the hearing, or the testimony during the hearings, was that the conditional use permit process is too unwieldy, it requires too much materials to be prepared to submit the application, it's going to cost tens of thousands of dollars to go through the process. And so one of the ideas was we would develop a specific application package that would only include those items that we needed to have in order to review whether or not special events on a piece of property were feasible or not. Another conclusion of the group was that we should, the amendments that we would bring back should specify that a CUP is required for commercial events, but also to create a simplified permit process for once-per-year commercial events. So leaving the background and moving now on into the proposed amendments, I'd like to focus first on what the major issue areas are that this amendment tries to address, and some of the major changes that are included in these ordinance amendments that were not in the previous one. First, we've First, we've included a purpose and intent statement in the regulations regarding charitable and other non-commercial events that specifies what those regulations and what types of events those regulations are intended to provide for. We've included language that addresses the applicability of the regulations, again, for charitable and other non-commercial events, whether or not they apply to small events with limited numbers of people. Also to add additional standards for both commercial and charitable and non-commercial events, to increase the compatibility of those events with the surrounding neighbors and land uses. And also to include a new special event use permit that would allow for a limited number of commercial events as an alternative to the existing minor conditional use permit So in regards to the changes for charitable and other non-commercial events, the purpose and intent section that I just mentioned, it would allow charitable and non-commercial events, for example, private family gatherings, as a use that is accessory to the residential use of the property, but it would specifically not allow events associated with the short-term rentals as charitable and other non-commercial events. And the short-term rental, for the purposes of the section of the ordinance, is the rental or use of property for 30 days or less, including rentals that are subject to the transient occupancy tax requirement of the County of Santa Barbara.
Excuse me, Mr. Lengel, Commissioner Brown has a question.
Thank you. Mr. Lengel, so this only applies to residential property, it doesn't apply to ag property that might be rented under the same conditions that residential, this purpose and intent section covers?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I think what might have been confusing when I said that we see these charitable and other non-commercial events to be accessory and ancillary to the residential use of a property, that could also include agricultural
Okay.
Zone lots also.
Okay.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, you lost me here on this chart. The purpose is to allow charitable events as accessory, but not allow the events associated with short-term rentals. But I don't get that. That's, seems to be a complete conflict. I mean, you want to allow the events as a use, but then not allow the events.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, the main purpose of this ordinance amendment is to address the situation where people are, where a landowner rents his property to another person on a short-term basis, that person then holds an event, and the claim there is that those events, because the person actually holding the event does not make any money off of it, constitutes a non-commercial event and therefore is exempt from a permit. So we're trying to specify that in this particular situation, where if I were to rent my property to Ms. Black for a short-term period, 30 days or less, and then she holds an event on that property, that that is not included within what we are providing permit exemptions for as charitable and other non-commercial events.
Okay, well. I guess, I guess, I guess the problem I have is, when you say in your second bullet point, maybe the word charitable should not be in there, because we've already agreed that if it's a charitable event, we don't care whether they rent it. I mean, you're losing me here still.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I think, I think the distinction we're trying to make is, what's the primary use of the property? If somebody is renting their property for a weekend at a time with the, with the purpose in mind for another party to hold an event, then the primary use of the property really isn't residential anymore, it's really to hold events. And so that's what we're trying to ferret out, and that's the problems we've been seeing, is those properties where typically somebody might hold an event or two on their property during the course of a year, but if they rent it out to a different party every single week, you're going to have a different event every single week associated with that property.
Okay, so I guess, I guess what we're trying to say here is, it's the number of events per property. We don't care who holds the event, whether it's the owner or a tenant, but I think we need to just change all this because it makes, it just looks confusing and say, we're going to count the number of events per property per year, period. It doesn't matter whether the owner of the property puts the event on, or they lease the property to somebody else who does the charity, or they lease it to a company that does events, it's just events per property, period.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, that's another way to address this. It's not the way it's addressed in the ordinance currently, and it's not the way we're proposing, but it's certainly another way to address it.
Well, I guess, I guess the issue is, if it confuses me, I, you know, I think it would confuse a lot of people.
Well, Commissioner Blau, we're just looking at a presentation, this isn't the ordinance language, it's an approach, and we'll have plenty of time to discuss whether the approach is appropriate. But having gone through these proposed ordinances in more detail, I think I finally see the intent of the staff in drafting the ordinance, it's not easy, it's not a simple process, and I don't think there's frankly any way to simplify it and get to where we want to be. But let's, let's go through the whole thing, and then we'll take another look.
Still on the subject of charitable and other non-commercial events, we're including an applicability section that provides sort of a base threshold of when an event would require consistency with the development regulations in the ordinance. And what we're proposing is that if you hold your own event on your own piece of property, and the number of people that attends the event, the total number of people that attend the event does not exceed 50, that that event is not regulated by the development standards that apply to non-commercial events. And this would allow people to host small private events, small private gatherings in excess of the five times per year limit for lots that are less than five acres without having to go through the land use permit process to hold more than five events. We're also proposing to add new standards that would apply to all charitable and non-commercial First, the new standard would specify that a permit for a reception or similar gathering facility commercial, which is the section under which commercial event venues are regulated, is required for any event associated with the short-term rental of property. A new standard also would require that for permit for, I'm sorry, for events that require a permit, that an event representative contact telephone number would be provided to all property owners located within certain radiuses of the piece of property. If the property on which the event is being held is one acre, I'm sorry, is less than one acre, all property owners within 300 feet would be notified. What we're proposing is that if the event venue is on a lot that is one acre or greater, that all owners within 1,000 feet would be notified of the application and pending We're also proposing to add new standards that limit exterior activities associated with the event between the hours of seven in the morning and 10:00 at night, but also allow that interior activities may occur past 10:00, only if the sound generated by that activity does not exceed 60 decibels at the property line of a contiguous piece of property that is under separate ownership and is occupied. In other words, there's residents on that property. Also specifying in the new regulations that there is no charge, fee, payment, or other compensation for the use of the property. However, reimbursement for costs associated with allowing the event to be held on a piece of property is allowed, so that a property owner does not have to be out money to host a charitable event, for example, where they provide some level of security or cleanup, they can be reimbursed for those costs. Specific to charitable events, we're proposing that these events, to qualify as a charitable event, shall be held or sponsored for the benefit of a nonprofit organization that is recognized by the IRS as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and that 100% of the net proceeds collected on behalf of the event, after operational expenses are met, go to the charitable However, because there are a number of nonprofit organizations that may not currently have a 501(c)(3) status and are charitable in their, in their approach and organization, we're also including language that the director may determine that an event for a nonprofit organization that is not recognized as a 501(c)(3) may still qualify as a charitable event, provided that the event complies with all the standards regarding charitable and non-commercial events, and that it is similar in nature to 501(c)(3) organizations, for example amateur sports clubs, educational, fraternal, religious, or service organizations.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sorry, Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you. Mr. Lengel, how do you guarantee that after the operational expenses are met, that the rest of the money will go to charitable events? Reason I bring this up is recently in the news in the last couple of weeks, there was a veterans, disabled veterans group that collected 53 million and didn't give one penny to the Veterans Disabled Veterans Organization, and yet, over three or four years, they collected 53 million. The government couldn't control that. How are we going to control this? How do we know? I mean, what you're saying is great here, that all the, all the other money should go to the charitable organization, but how do we know? Or how do we guarantee that?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Valencia, we're not seeking to audit anybody's books associated with these events, and so we're not going to be able to guarantee that this occurs unless we're standing there watching the counting of the money and disbursement of it, which is not feasible and not something we're even suggesting that we might want to do. However, if there are situations where it's obvious that all of the money's not going to the charity, then that's a, then that's perhaps something we can then pursue in the associated, I'm sorry, we can pursue as a zoning enforcement effort if need be, just to make sure that people are adhering to this as closely as they can. But again, we're not going to be able to
There isn't any way, there isn't any way of ensuring that this money goes to charity. I mean, it could be a charitable event, but it could all, what is, after the expenses are paid, it could be for profit and they just stick it in their pocket, and there's nothing that we would, could do or know about.
Commissioner, if I can just respond first, and then you can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but as I read the concepts, Commissioner Valencia, we have to always realize that, that the county's process is complaint-driven. So if someone has a loud party and the neighbors complain about it, and the county comes in and investigates, and one of the facts they learn is that the event sponsor pocketed the money, that would certainly eliminate any exemption or other qualification for the charity. But I don't think we're going to know upfront.
It's going to be self-policing.
Well, it's going to be policed after the fact, if in fact there are complaints. And I think we have to realize that in all of the ordinance language, we're talking about cases where the parties are so loud, or so bothersome, or so close to being a nuisance that people complain, and then compliance with the ordinance will be looked at more closely.
Thank you for the reminder, Mrs. Chair.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, my question is similar to that, but, so we have this requirement to get a CUP for a commercial event. So what's the penalty if I don't get a CUP and have a commercial event?
The Department, if we receive a complaint regarding that, would then pursue zoning enforcement efforts, a series of fines.
So how much is the fine, is the question?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, we talked about this a couple of months ago, and we're, we're currently working on improving our fine structure, but currently for a one-time event, it's $100 for the first event, $200 for the second event, $500 for the third event, and then $500 thereafter.
Okay, so I could have three events for $700, $800, which is going to be far less than the cost of doing a CUP. I don't care how you structure it, at least on your current staff report, so I just made that comment. But if I'm a commercial user, I'll pay the fines and go do it.
Mr. Chair, the other, and that, Commissioner Blau, that is a real difficulty with our current structure. The other option is that the county can take the party to court if they show noncompliance again and again and again and again. So that's, that's the other option, under our current regulations.
Thank you, thank you both. Let's keep going.
Moving on. Again, specific to non-commercial events, we're proposing to add standards that provide that, in order to qualify as a non-commercial event, and this would not include political fundraisers, that admission fee could not be charged, the event could not be filmed for commercial purposes, there could be no promoting a product at the event, public advertising could not occur, and the short, and again, you cannot involve the short-term rental of the lot or any portion of the lot. In regards to the new special event use permit that we're proposing to be added to the ordinance, to provide a simplified permit process for a limited number of commercial events on residential and agriculturally zoned property, the, as proposed in the ordinance, it would allow for up to four commercial events per year, provided that each one is separated by at least 30 days. It's a discretionary permit, subject to SEQA, under the jurisdiction of the planning director, so a public hearing is not required in this instance. If it's in the coastal zone, you'd also have to apply for coastal development permit I'll go over later on what the Montecito Planning Commission discussion was regarding special event permits, but essentially, the four event per year is our proposal at this point in time, and your commission may, in your deliberation, decide that that's too many, or that that is sufficient. You can keep it at four events per year. One suggestion is that a new special event use permit be approved each year so it wouldn't just continue on adding an item, and the number of events allowed through the special event use permit can also be reduced.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Mr. Lengel, on the first item where you said keep proposed four events per year, are you suggesting or recommending that four events would be allowed with one permit? Or you have to apply, for four events, you have to apply four times?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, as proposed, as written in the ordinance, it allows, the special event use permit will allow for four events per year, and that there's no sunset date on that permit, so.
So even though the events may, the events could be completely different in size and scope, it's, how would you, I looked at your checklist, and it just seems to me that if you have events of varying 100 to 500, it's a commercial
you have events of varying 100 to 500, it's a commercial event, your checklist is going to be somewhat different for each event, so I'm not sure how that would apply to what you're seeking in terms of the impacts of the event.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, the draft application is just that and we'll be working on it more thoroughly as the ordinance proceeds through the adoption process. We didn't want to get too far into developing a full-on application package until we sort of knew what direction the event was headed in so we could address exactly questions like that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, the intention was that however many events can be permitted under a special, the event, special event use permit application, you would only have to apply once and that would carry on into subsequent years. That's the way it's drafted now and what Mr. Lengel indicated is your commission may want to consider fewer events being authorized by this special event use permit or that the special event use permit be required each year instead of allowing for an unlimited number of years of events.
Because then noticing would be at the time of the application submittal and the neighbors would know, okay, so this guy, this firm has applied for four events, but dates are unknown, the scope and size of the events is unknown at the time of application submittal. I mean, that's potentially what could be on this permit. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I think you're correct that the dates would not necessarily be known. I think we would need to assume a certain level of event and the event would have to be, you know, at that level or below. We do intend to have zoning clearances following up, following for each event, so somebody would come in, confirm that they're complying with the conditions, including notification to the neighbors under that section that Noel talked about before.
But a zoning clearance.
Is not appealable.
Yeah, thank you.
So the appealable action would be the special event use permit.
While we're on that subject, the special event use permit is proposed to be Planning Director issued permit, so what is the noticing? How would the neighbors learn about the permit and have an opportunity to object?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the zoning, or the director's decisions are noticed 10 days prior to his making a decision and then we notice the decision so that people know when they can appeal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brooks?
Yes, just a quick explanation of what you just said, Mr. Lengel, that the planning director jurisdiction would cover the special event use permit, but earlier in, you were saying that there's going to be like a special events committee or the different department heads would be involved in that? That was back on page five. When you were giving background, you talked about a special events, let's see.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brooks, yes. In response to certain events that have occurred, the CEO directed that a committee be established that would review all applications for special events on property within the county of Santa Barbara and that the committee is comprised of representatives from the different departments that have a permitting or have either a permit to issue or potentially could have a permit to issue depending on the scope of the event.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brooks, just to clarify, that committee is not a decision-making committee. It's really a committee the CEO put together to ensure that we coordinate in the event process. What was, what has happened in the past is one department would know about an event, but other departments would not, and so the process of having this committee is really intended to provide for a communication tool between the departments.
Building on the question regarding noticing, again, just to provide that the notice would be provided if the event is on a lot of less than one acre to all owners within 300 feet, if the lot is one acre or more to all owners within 1,000 feet. There would also be findings for approval of the special event use permit. The first set of findings would be those that are the same as the existing set of findings for conditional use permits that address compatibility of the proposed conditional use with the surrounding area. Two other conditions would be added to state that, or to find that the use will be compatible with and subordinate to the agricultural, rural, and scenic character of rural areas and that the use will not conflict with any easements for public access or public use of the property.
Commissioner Blau.
Back up, give me an example of a use that conflicts with an easement for public access or public use of the property.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, for example, if there is a public trail easement that runs through a piece of property, in order to approve the special event use permit, the director would have to find that the location of the event or the staging of the event would not, let's say, block that trail so that the public could still utilize that trail during the event. The decision on the special event use permit by the director could be appealed to the county planning commission and as Diane mentioned earlier, prior to each event, the department would have to issue a zoning clearance that would ensure that all the appropriate conditions of the overall special event use permit are being met for the specific event. Currently, in the coastal zone, we don't have the zoning clearance process, although that will be coming to you fairly soon to add that. So, and the existing language in the Article II amendment, it would require the land use permit be issued prior to each event.
Commissioner Brown.
So, under your proposal, an applicant applies for four events per period of time, unknown what they are. So how do you provide a zoning clearance without having knowledge of what the exact event is? Because then the applicant has to come back in and tell you the exact circumstances that weren't provided in the initial special use permit, special event permit. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, we will need to have a certain level of specificity as to what kind of events are being proposed in order to do an adequate SEQA analysis of the project. And so we'll need to know things like maximum numbers of peoples, where on property the events will be staged, how traffic and parking will be controlled, things like that will be, need to be specified as part of the special event use permit. And then prior to each event, let's say 30 days prior, the permit holder would then say, okay, I've got an event coming up in, on July 4th, and they would, you know, apply for a zoning clearance and we would use that opportunity to make sure that what they're doing as part of that event does meet their conditions of approval of the overall special event use permit. They've got the parking controls in place, they've established whatever level of sanitary facilities they need to, things of that nature.
So it's a double application, basically? It's an application and half for each event because they've got to come back for zoning clearance? Is there a cost for the, associated with zoning clearance?
There is a cost. Right now, the zoning clearance is used primarily to allow for uses that have been previously approved under a conditionally use permit or development plan, so the existing fee structure provides for a $1,500 deposit. However, the director does have the ability to determine a more appropriate fee amount. And again, as this proceeds forward, we'll be looking at our fee ordinance to provide a specific zoning clearance fee for special event clearances.
Wouldn't it be less cumbersome to have the applicant, to have an applicant apply just once? And then for tracking purposes, not only for staff, but the community, it'd be a lot easier? I mean, was that ever considered? I mean, why did you consider this rather than just one submission per event?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I'm not quite sure I understand your question.
Well, because if I'm, if I'm applying for a special event use permit for four events, if my events are going to occur, I don't know, they could occur over a two-year period. I don't know what that fourth event might be in the second year. So I have to come back in that second year with a fair amount of good detail, what's, what I see in your checklist here, to do that, plus I have to pay an additional fee. So if I were just to, it seems to me it'd be more efficient for me and for staff and for the community to be able to track these things because they're the ultimate, they're the ultimate enforcers of the zoning ordinance, is just to have, every time the applicant wants to do this, it comes in, okay, this is what I, this is what I'm planning, this is the one fee for the whole thing, and just get on with it, so.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I think you could, you could structure this a couple of different ways. What we heard from some members of the event industry is they didn't want to go through a discretionary process multiple times. But you could structure it so that every time somebody wanted to hold an event, they got a special event use permit, which is discretionary, and then they wouldn't have to go through that follow-up process every time because that would be duplicative. If you try to permit a number of these events all at the same time, then it seems as if there needs to be a process to confirm that the event that they're thinking about but haven't really planned the details for, meet the conditions of approval of that discretionary permit. So you could do it lots of different ways.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I kind of agree. I don't really understand the reason for doing the zoning clearance. If I have my special event use permit and the conditions are, by example, 300 or less people, for 300 people, you have to have, you know, one toilet per 50 people, you could set all these things down and as long as they comply, why would they need to come back and talk about zoning? I mean, it seems to me you could, you could create the conditions, create the approval, and so long as they stay within that original permit, they don't need to come back and get a zoning clearance and pay you $1,500 and give you the same detail that you made before. The other thing that I'm not sure I necessarily agree with is the idea that, well, maybe this is in our deliberations, but you know, if, assuming we all think four per year is right, I don't think you need to apply yearly. I mean, it seems to me you would get your permit. I would not sense it, the permit, but I would like to see it, like to see the county be able to revoke the permit based on legitimate complaints or violations of the original deal. To me, that, that's why I asked it before, what's the penalty for not complying? Well, let's just have it, we have the ability to revoke the permit, they stop doing any of the special events because they violated their conditions or they caused such problems that complaints are valid. But it seems to me the zoning clearance and paying $1,500 per event is burdensome to both the public and burdensome to the county and not cost-effective and not necessary.
Okay, well, just to point out, the two, the two positions that Commissioners Brown and Blau pointed out, both argue for a single hearing, but you would dispense with the zoning because you don't think it's necessary and I think Commissioner Brown's position is that there should be a lot more information each time an event is conducted. So, you know, we have a variety of potential here and what I really want to do is, is hear from the public as staff did so that we have that kind of input for our conclusion. But Commissioner, and Commissioner Brown is deferring to Mr. Lengel so we can finish up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And quickly, in regards to standards specific to commercial events, we're proposing to add the same requirements that we talked about previously for charitable and other non-commercial events, that for commercial events, that an EVF representative contact number be provided to the surrounding property owners and that the exterior activities are limited to timing in the same manner and to the same noise standards. The Montecito Planning Commission, when they reviewed the proposed ordinance amendments, their comments were primarily that the threshold for what would trigger compliance with the requirements for charitable and other non-commercial events should be raised to 75 or more, or 75 or less, so that if your gathering only had 76 people, I'm sorry, 74 people, that it would not be subject to the regulations. To keep the number of charitable and other non-commercial events at three per year with the maximum number of attendees limited to 300, could also add the provision to allow an additional event where the number of attendees could exceed 300. And lastly, to reduce the number of commercial events allowed with a special use, special event use permit to one event per property per year. There was not unanimous support of that last comment and some, one commissioner expressed that there should be no commercial events within Montecito. Next steps, we go back to the Montecito Planning Commission, currently scheduled for September the 26th of next month, and then from then on to, back to you, on October the 17th. And again, this is a tentative schedule and we'll see how it develops.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, one of the things I asked for in the last hearing was information based on TOT taxes, when they're collected, and I'm not, I'm not seeing anybody from the tax collector's office and I'm not seeing any information in my staff report that talks about it.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, we did, I did speak with a member of the tax collector's office and reviewed the county code section regarding transient occupancy taxes. TOTs, as they're familiarly known, are paid, are required to be paid by the occupant of the property when a, a structure is leased or rented for a period of 30 days or less for lodging, occupancy, and other similar accommodations. So if you were renting a piece of property for a weekend and you're living there essentially for that weekend, you would be subject to the TOT. However, if you're just renting a piece of property for a few hours for a wedding, for example, then the TOT does not apply.
Just a comment, I mean, I was hoping that we would have someone that was very knowledgeable about that, so I could ask questions, but as I read the tax code, that's not the case. If I rent a hotel room for four hours during the day, I still pay a TOT tax. I'm not sure why that's not different in this case. And then my second question the last time we met was, if the TOT taxes aren't applicable, is there anything we could do to make them applicable to this situation? Because, and the only reason I ask that is, one of the questions I asked several of the entertainment, people that were in the industry, is there any problem paying a TOT tax? I didn't get anybody to say that it was. They're happy to pay the TOT taxes. And for me, this is a, I mean, this county is significantly short of revenue, obviously. We're laying off employees, we're having difficulty with the budget, and based on the testimony we heard last time from the public, this is millions of dollars being paid for these properties, and if we start collecting TOT taxes at the rate of 10 or 11 or 12%, it's significant revenue for the county. However, I think it's an insignificant cost to the event holder. So hopefully, when you come back again, we can get somebody from Mr. Hagen's office to come in and talk about that and get somebody from the county council's office to tell us what it would take to change the regulation so we can collect the TOT taxes on a daily rental for a wedding or other special event. So I don't know if it's a question or not, but that's what I need next time in order to help make my decision.
Commissioner Blau, you did notice that, that the ordinance does provide that notice would be given to the tax collector of the event application?
I understand that, but the issue is, is it a taxable event? And if it's not a taxable event, how do we make it a taxable event? That's the question I'm asking.
If it's part of this ordinance process or another?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. If there are no further questions at this time from commissioners, I'd like to get started on the public comment, reminding everyone that if you simply join with another speaker's comments, try and indicate that so that we don't, we don't repeat each other excessively. We will try and get through the hearing with everybody staying under three minutes if you. If you get to the point where three minutes is approaching, please try and wrap up, so I don't have to interrupt you. All right. Um, we'll take the speaker slips in the order presented, at least to me. Allison Henson will be first, Anna, uh, DeLisandro will follow her, and Christine McGinnis will be the third speaker. Allison Henson?
I think she had to leave.
Oh, okay. So Anna, uh, DeLisandro is here. Christina McGinnis, and then Jennifer Siemens.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide these comments on the proposed amendments to the special events ordinance. My name is Anna DeLisandro, and I'm here on behalf of the law firm of Breeds, Fox, and Bartlett, and, uh, we did previously submit written comments on, on some of these items, and I have a copy of those written submissions here with me today. I'd like to address some of the legal concerns presented by the proposed ordinance amendments, specifically the constitutionality or lack thereof with respect to the same. Um, it's apparent from numerous case law, California case law, that the Constitution prohibits local government from adopting the proposed ordinance amendments, including but not limited to any ordinance provision which requires a tenant who rents property for thirty days or less to obtain a conditional use permit in order to host an event, wedding, gathering, or such on the property. In addition to issues of vagueness, overbreadth, and, and being overly broad with respect to certain terms in the, um, the proposed amendments, such as the definition of the word "event", um, there's serious First Amendment implications, um, the protections of the freedom of speech and assembly, um, which would be adversely impacted by the proposed ordinance. Zoning ordinances which require a conditional use permit for conduct of speech and assembly operations are subject to strict scrutiny because they impact the First Amendment rights. Um, in the city of Imperial Beach versus Escot, the city required a conditional use permit for operation of an adult bookstore. The ordinance was found to be an impermissible attempt to use zoning ordinance to restrict constitutionally protected activities. Requirements for obtaining a conditional use permit, um, are subjective and incapable of precise measurement, and restrictions on protected activities must set forth definite objective guidelines. Thus, the requirements that tenants who rent property for thirty days or less must obtain conditional use permits for hosting events on property, private property, um, are, you know, unconditionally vague, uncertain, overbroad, and impermissible prior restraints against the U.S. Constitution, First Amendment-protected activity. The California Constitution also protects an individual's right of privacy. A zoning ordinance requiring inquiry into the identity of the users of a residence is suspect. In Coalition Advocating Legal Housing Options versus City of Santa Monica, the city attempted to restrict second units to a select subgroup of users. The court concluded that the city's efforts must fail because the legitimate objective it held, such as prevention of crowding, parking, could be accomplished by alternative means with little or no privacy impact. Essentially, the court found that inquiry into the types of users of property in an attempt to regulate activity, um, was impermissible. Here, the county seeks to regulate uses of property by the identity of the users, i.e. a short-term renter, and this does not pass constitutional scrutiny. You simply can't regulate people's conduct based on the identity of the actor.
Ms. Alisandro, I'm not sure you were prepared for three-minute limitation, but we're there.
Oh, and we're there. All right, can I finish up? That, simply that, that it also violates equal protection rights, basically, because you're treating short-term renters differently than all property owners. So if the, if the county can come up with a, a way to find appropriate findings to require special events across the board, so that all property owners have to obtain these permits under all the same circumstances, and not differentiate between a thirty, then, then they probably get around the constitutional issues. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Christine is here, Jennifer Siemens is next, she'll be followed by Jerry Ambrose.
Good morning, Chair Cooney and Commissioners, great to see you all, it's been a while. Um, I'd like to commend the county and the staff for, um, addressing the issue of events on a countywide basis, and there are some major issues related to the allowances of commercial events on agricultural land that should be proactively fixed. As we are all aware, there are many loopholes in the current events allowances that have been abused in the past, and I'd just like to draw your attention to one example of what we absolutely do not want to happen. Um, I was eating in a coffee shop across the street, and, uh, one of the patrons commented to me that he had just moved to Santa Barbara because he was making so much money renting out his ranch, uh, for weddings and for VRBO, um, that he didn't have to pursue his ag operation any longer, because he was, it was just too much work to do ag anymore, and, um, he was making so much money from the events on his property, and I've provided you, I, after I met him, and it was just completely random, no preconceived, he just offered this information, didn't know who I was. So, um, I printed out his information just for your edification. Um, and so if the county doesn't begin to enforce these types of blatant violations, ag will become secondary to commercial operations. Um, he used to organically farm with Tom Shepherd and another farmer, um, so, not anymore. And just for the record, um, I, I, well, actually, I said that already. I asked him if he had obtained a CUP for the operation, and he kind of looked startled and said that he was working on it. Um, so it's absolutely critical that these commercial events and the income from it does not surpass the income of farming and ranching, otherwise, the ag portion will go away, as in the example I've provided, which I'm sure is one, one of many that exists throughout the county. Um, it's very helpful that the county's processes yielded specific definitions of what is charitable and what is a charitable event. Um, I hope that your commission upholds and supports these very helpful definitions. This is something that we are discussing currently at the GAVPAC level, and your deliberations here will help to inform our discussions on this issue, which is going to take place this evening. Um, and I avidly support the notion of having a cap on events of three total per calendar year, because as Commissioner Blau and others have expressed, it's very confusing to try to figure out, um, what, what tier they would fall under. Um, so just having a cap and a number is going to be much more helpful. As with the Apple Creek Ranch example, this will certainly help to ensure that events are incidental to the primary event that should be happening on our agricultural lands, and that is agriculture. I would also strongly recommend that the new special events use permit that allows events privileges with only director approval and no public hearing, except that it is appealable, should only apply to a one-time, single, one-day event, and should be issued no more frequently than once every twelve-month period, and it sounds like the Montecito Planning Commission also echoed that sentiment. Individual event days should each count as an event, except for setup and cleanup of one day each. Um, and finally, since the lack of enforcement on special events has become such a major issue, it is imperative that a standard and explicit condition of all approved CUPs should be that if the events privileges are abused, the, the CUP should be revoked. Um, it is, the hundred-dollar fine is really a joke, and additionally, um, the CUPs for events privileges should contain a sunset clause, um, at which time the, the CUP could be reviewed to make sure they're in compliance. Thank you very, very much for considering my, my comments, and, uh, look forward to your deliberations.
Thank you. Ms. McGinnis, is Jennifer, Jennifer's here, hi. I noticed you have a new last name.
Yes, I was gonna maybe say something about that. Good mornings, Planning Commissioners and Chairman Cooney. Most of you probably know me as Jennifer Foster, but pretty recently married, and so I took the bold move of, uh, changing my last name, so now I'm Jennifer Siemens. And, um, this morning, I'm simply here to read a letter into the record that I just got in this morning to you all, I gave you a copy of it this morning, and it's on behalf of the owners of Halama Canyon Ranch, who are David Grotenhouse and Wayne Siemens. There is a relation there. Um, dear Commissioners, I write to you to express my concerns regarding the new temporary uses ordinance amendments. We are the owners of a thousand-acre ranch on Halama Road known as Halama Canyon Ranch. The primary use of the ranch is agriculture. We have a vineyard, cattle operation, goats, alpacas, and olives. However, the ranch has also been used in the past for weddings and similar events. Since we were informed by planning and development staff that we were not permitted to have weddings at our ranch, we immediately ceased having these events, and we are in the process of ensuring that all structures at the property are in compliance with current ordinances. When we were having special events, we never received one complaint from a neighbor. Since the ranch is so large, there is about one mile between the event location and our closest neighbor. Furthermore, there is ample room for parking without causing any impacts to our neighbors or causing any interference with our agricultural operations. Our property is the perfect place to be able to enjoy an agricultural use that is not disrupted by special events, and to be able to allow people to have special events, all without disturbing any neighbors or the rural agricultural character of the area. As you know, Santa Barbara County is an extremely desirable place for couples to have a destination wedding and special events. People are drawn to the rural beauty and unspoiled environment. We agree that some regulation must occur to keep this character and environment in place, but consideration should be given to larger properties that can accommodate such events much more easily than others. Based on the information contained in the staff report dated July twenty-seventh, the proposed special event use permit is appealable all the way up to the Board of Supervisors. Since this is the case, it seems that permitting for a special event could take months or even a year or longer. How can one plan for an event when the length of the permitting process is an unknown? The whole point of being able to plan an event is to have a specific date and know well in advance that that date is viable. Even if one submits an application one year in advance due to the permitting process, if a permit is appealable to the board, theoretically, it could take a good part of a year to receive approval or denial of that permit, therefore, there's no real way to plan for such an event. We suggest that special event use permits receive some type of priority in the permitting process or streamlined expedited process due to their nature. The type of information requested in the application is straightforward, therefore, the permitting process should be too. An applicant should be able to know that if he submits an application that, within a specified period of time, he will either have a permit or not so as to be able to plan appropriately for the event. Unless an owner can relay that to someone who is interested in using the site as a special event, the whole permit process is meaningless. We also suggest that allowance for how many events can occur without a minor CUP be increased to ten to fifteen per year. As stated above, some properties are more able to accommodate events than others. Perhaps if a property can prove that it can accommodate parking, and if there is a substantial distance between the event and the neighbors, that is not necessary to go through the very arduous, costly, and time-consuming process of receiving a minor CUP. Also, since a special event use permit comes with its own set of conditions, what is the real difference between allowing a set amount of events under the special event use permit versus the minor CUP process? The minor CUP process would appear to bog staff and the Planning Commission down in needless paperwork and processing, while the special event use permit process is the means to the same end.
You don't need to read the last paragraph.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have your letter.
Okay.
And congratulations. Jerry Ambrose, is Jerry here? Melissa Musgrove, and Melissa will be followed by Jennifer Hausch, and by Philippe Sautoux.
Good morning, I'm Melissa Musgrove, and I'm a professional photographer in the events industry in Santa Barbara. I'm a member of the Santa Barbara Event Professionals and the International Society of Special Events Ventura Santa Barbara Chapter, although today, I'm here as a homeowner and business owner in Santa Barbara. And I, uh, with all due respect, I thank you all so much, I know, I've been to the past meetings that started last year, and I thank you for your time and energy, but I really have to ask, is this simplified? I really don't believe, I mean, it's, I can't even understand it, and I'm really trying to understand it, I'm wondering how the average homeowner is going to understand it. And I also think this really speaks to, um, the problems that there have been in the business, and it actually is, seems like it's meant for homeowners that are making it a business. What about the just average homeowner that wants to have an event on their property? I'm opposed to this, and, um, I also, as I, as we were hearing that, you know, charitable events will be allowed, or political events will be allowed, what about just the average hard-working citizen of this town that's trying to hold on to their property in this economy, and the small businesses? Um, it, I, I know some of the hotels in town, one of our big hotels in town has recently, uh, stopped dinners at one of their restaurants in the hotel because of, they, the economy, they just can't keep it up, and I've heard a rumor that another one of our big hotels is going to, several nights of week, um, during the winter months, close their restaurant. And these special events that we have on these properties bring lots of people here, and even though they might not be having their event at these hotels, their guests are staying at those hotels. I recently, my daughter was married a few weeks ago at a private home here in Santa Barbara, and we had sixty guests, and although I'm very well-connected to everyone that was working the event, at ten o'clock, when it was time for the music to go off, you might think I would have had some special pull for that DJ to keep playing, but he would not, he, that was it, it was ten o'clock, it was over, we had shuttle service, so I, and our guests all stayed at hotels in the area, and, um, toured the area, went out on the boats, went on wine tours, they spent a lot of money here, and it was just a small group. So I, I hope you really will consider the economy of Santa Barbara. And then I also want to say, I'm the wife of a sign maker, and perhaps you know about getting permits for signs in this town, and so, living with a sign maker, I know how horrendous it is for the average person, the average businessperson, to try to get a permit, and just looking at this, I'm thinking, gosh, just a sign permit. And as I drove down here from my home up in Samarkan area, I was looking at the signs and facades of our small businesses in town, and I can't tell you how many just banner signs that have been there for over a year, because they don't want to have to go through the permitting process. It's expensive, it's difficult, um, and I just think Santa Barbara absolutely has to encourage their small businesses, uh, to be able to make a living here. I mean, who's going to police these permits? We're not even policing the permits we have, obviously, with the signage in town and, uh, the facade design, uh, I mean, the facades of some of our businesses, so I really, I, I can't imagine how you're going to police this. And I had a thought while I was sitting up there.
Give us your thought, and then...
Okay, well, I, with all due respect, you know, uh, this is our livelihood, and you all had your time, so I'm hoping we can have some time. Um, now I lost my train of thought.
Oh, it was a good thought, too.
Bummer. But, um, hm, all right, hold on, maybe I'll see it here.
You said you had a thought as you were coming in here.
Hmm, oh, well, I guess that's it. I just hope that you will not pass this ordinance. It's convoluted, in my opinion, it just does not speak to, oh, I know what I was going to say. Being a member of the Santa Barbara Events Professional, maybe we're going down the wrong road trying to change ordinances. Perhaps there should be an organization like the Santa Barbara Events Professionals whereby there is a standard to belong to that group, and anyone having an event on their property would have to use vendors through that group that know that they have to, there are these rules that have to be followed, and, and I just think that might be easier to police, let us police ourselves first, um, which is what many of us already do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jennifer Hausch, and Philippe Sato, and then Reverend Miriam Lindbeck.
Hey, good morning, thank you very much for letting us all have a chance to speak. Um, I've been in the event profession for over ten years now, I've done event planning, I've done floral design, I've done, um, events on my property, and, um, you know, I've seen how much income, uh, destination weddings, you know, people bring in to Santa Barbara. I've seen how it affects all the local vendors, from rental companies to photographers, to caterers, to everything else, to the wine industry, because people come here because they love Santa Barbara. I've had, um, you know, I've helped local people, because, um, you know, having private properties, um, sometimes are more affordable. We also live in a generation of, um, do-it-yourselfers, where people don't want to just have events on hotels or banquet rooms or something, they want to be in private homes, they want to be on ranches. Um, I've seen the promotion of agriculture through using private ranches, um, estates, farms, um, things like that, that it doesn't deter from, you know, growing things, it doesn't deter from, um, the agriculture of the, of the county, it actually enhances it and promotes it. Um, I would love to see the system simplified, I would love to see the ordinance simplified, I would love to see the conditional use permits and all that simplified, that from what I've seen here, everything is more and more complicated, between, um, having to go through coastal zone and, you know, the... and, you know, the, the special event permit, plus adding everything else in there, it's not simple. And, you know, if you do, if you are a homeowner and people say, well, just get the conditional use permit, it's impossible to get. And I would actually, I would love to see examples given of where conditional use permits have actually been issued. From what I hear, none have actually been issued. And so, you know, you, as the county, are asking us to go through a process that's not achievable. And being in, you know, an economy as we are now, I'm looking for, for people to help us grow the economy and become successful, and, you know, able to achieve, you know, an income and pay for our property taxes and stuff. Let's see. And unfortunately, you know, being a complaint-driven system, that, you know, any neighbor, if, if we have a property in Galita, somebody in San Maria can complain. And, you know, whether it affects them or not, you know, we're held accountable to standards that, you know, that it's, 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 sorry, I just lost my train of thought. It's almost impossible to deal with, so, anyway, long story short, I would love to see it simplified, I would love to see, you know, everybody make it easier for us to generate income for the county, and I just, I appreciate your time and effort and everything, and I hope we can keep working to find a happy medium where not only us as business owners and vendors and everybody else, you know, can be happy, but the neighbors can be, can be happy. And, you know, that we can find a happy medium with everything at an affordable cost in, in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Mr. Sato, followed by Reverend Lindbeck, followed by Mike Lunsford.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, Commissioner and staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk in front of you today. My name is Philippe Sato, I'm the owner of Events by Philippe. I've been a resident of this beautiful city for 35 years, and I've been conducting private events, weddings, and catering events for the last 20 years. As of today, I'm still waiting to receive a single complaint on any events. We have conducted over 2,600 events over the last 20 years. When, I believe, when events are conducted with professional people, there's no, there's no issues. And basically, the issues arise when we have some out-of-towners from Los Angeles or some of the cities coming to conduct events in our city and have no, no, no knowledge of regulation laws and whatsoever. So I think, you know, I'm really concerned about the overregulation, I'm really concerned about the confuse, about ordinance, how confusing and complicated it can be. I am also, I'm not willing, I'm willing to pay the fees, it's not, the issue is not the fees. I think we are, we are forgetting what the issues, or the urgent issues was about. We, originally, the issue was neighbor, neighbors complaining about noise or about events. I don't think this ordinance is actually covering the issue itself. No matter what, no matter, even if I get a permit, even if I go through the whole process, nothing is going to guarantee one neighbor is not going to complain about the event. No matter if I follow all the rules, if I do, if I keep the noise down, if I keep the parking down, nothing is going to guarantee one neighbor is not going to complain, even if that neighbor has been aware of the event. So I think, you know, they will come to the board, they will complain, they will file formal complaint, and it's, we are, we are not dealing with the real issues right now. So I think, I really appreciate all the work you've put into this ordinance, but I think we need to go back to the, to the board, and I think we need to go over simplification, and I think we should not discriminate against commercial, non-commercial events. I live next to a neighbor who is rebuilding his house, has been rebuilding his house for three months. There's probably more noise in this house than I've done on 2,000 events, and I don't hear any regulations here. So I think we have to be realistic, you know, we understand the county needs money, we understand we need to have some regulations, but we don't want to burden, we don't want to put a burden on the event industry, on the tourist industry, on basically the source of income this county needs to survive. Because if we take that away, I'm sure all of us, including all of you, will be looking for work next week. You know, we have to keep the revenues in the county, but we don't want to kill the revenues in the county. So we don't want to over-regulate, we just want to make sure we apply the procedure. And also, the enforcement will bother me, because you just mentioned that you're laying off employees, you're, who is going to go through a process of permits? Who's going to enforce it? I'm, I'm really concerned about that, too. You know, who is going to go through the permits and give the, the applications a go if you don't have the staff to do it? Are you going to hire more people to enforce the ordinance? That's another question. So this is just what I said, to say today, but thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you for coming in for your comments. Reverend Lindbeck? Michael Lunsford will be next, and then Lee Rosenberg.
Morning, Chair and Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity and for all of your hard work. I'm thinking that today, perhaps, we may have to be looking at this primary land use from a particularly different point of view. I think globally and locally, we are seeing that economy has changed all over, and that perhaps we have to start looking at our particular use of the land as multiple stream income venues. The events industry is not a small industry, its fiscal impact is significant. It is an industry that we must also treat as a major part of our area now, as it has been this way for quite some time. So perhaps we could start looking at this from the events industry down, and also from the agricultural point of view, so that we could come to a central meeting place that respects both industries. And whatever we need to take care of with the private sector in terms of noise, nuisance, traffic, and any kind of environmental pollution to the area, that that all be taken into consideration. But it may very well be that we have to look at everything from a, a larger economic point of view. Thank you so very much for all your time.
Thank you. Mr. Lunsford, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Mike Lunsford for the Gaviota Coast Conservancy, and I would like to just open by saying, this is not about restricting commercial events, it's about opening up new areas to commercial events. And I would point out that when you take commercial event venues from commercial areas and put them in agricultural zones or residential zones, you starve the commercial areas from that, those events as well. So this is a new thing. I think that the, the ordinance, I would say, from the beginning, that we support the effort to clarify these rules. I think there's been good work done on this. We have no problem with the non-commercial events, I think those are, are good. I think the risk is, in the commercial events, the risks are to the continued use of the agricultural lands in agricultural uses. It's going to be a challenge to do this, allow some limited amount of commercial use, commercial events, that doesn't undermine the continued use of agriculture. So I think it's very important that the staff has spent the time with the public to get it right, and it's by necessity going to have to be a little complex. I'm particularly concerned about the enforcement of, you know, the issues that Commissioner Valencia raised. It's been a concern of ours from the beginning. We at GCC have received phone calls from neighbors of certain kinds of things that are going on, on the Gaviota Coast. They look to us as a way of these things being handled without them being involved with their neighbors. So I, I would like to suggest that GCC and other like organizations in the community are the ones that this enforceability falls to because of the complaint-driven system. You're noticing requirements, should consider putting us, you know, have a list of who gets noticed, but I'd like GCC to be on that list. Now, if we see something, and there are certain requirements in the permitting thing, right, we don't necessarily have access to report to staff the specific violations. We can know that it's happening, that there's an event happening, and we can tell you about that. But we can't tell you too much more unless we just happen to be fortunate enough to have that information for one reason or another. So I like the idea of this rule of three. Now, staff has said four events per year, these commercial events. If somebody has an event that's more than that, it's more noticeable, we don't have to get into the specifics about the violations, you know, of the numbers or one thing or another, we just know that it happened. And it's been my experience with staff in enforcing policy, or, you know, CUP controls, conditions, is that you have to, as the government, take the word of that person, unless you have evidence to the contrary. So the enforceability thing is very difficult on everyone involved, so if we just limit it to a number of, of events, we know when another one is happening, and I think it's a much cleaner operation.
Thank you, Mr. Lunsford.
Thank you.
And for the record, you're representing the Gaviota Coast Conservancy today, right? You, you didn't mention that, you said GCC, but I wanted the record to be clear.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rosenberg, followed by Beth Collins-Bergard.
That's Ashley.
Okay, all right, Mr. Rosenberg, then Ken O'Keefe will follow you.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you, if I can be heard. The, the first thing I have to do is to say how extraordinarily accessible, interested, and thoughtful the staff has been in this process. I've had the privilege of attending several rather intimate meetings of 10 or 12 people with staff, and have found them an excellent environment in which to exchange ideas without having to speak but not be spoken to, so I thank them. My points are as follows: The actions of a few should not be the basis for limiting the property rights of the many. A better approach would be to craft an amendment to the existing ordinance that addresses the true issues underlying all of the problems. And this is a mantra that I keep repeating, but I'll not repeat it here. Lack of traffic control, excessive noise, and inadequate parking on-site. I had requested a number relative to the complaints that were received by staff, and was told that they were only a handful. I don't know what a handful is, is it five or six, two or three, 10 or 20, but a handful. This is the actions of a few. Since the process is complaint-driven, it would seem to me that, that a great deal of simplification could occur in response only to the nature and extent of the complaints that are provided. I would suspect, although I haven't got the information in hand, that these complaints are related to these three fundamental issues: traffic control, parking, and excessive noise. If there are others, I would certainly be interested in knowing. Secondly, although the staff has most certainly done its best under great pressure, this ordinance is very complicated, as other speakers have indicated. The, people throw up their hands. Why put people through a process of getting a special event use permit, they shouldn't need to hold four or fewer small events per year if they charge for the use of their home or ranch? If there are only 50 to 75 or 100 people there, this seems like a lot of bother for so few occasions. Again, noise, traffic, parking, those are the three issues that we should focus on. I concur with the Montecito Planning Commission that the number of guests for charitable events and any other non-commercial event like a political fundraiser that, that don't count in the maximum number of events should be increased to 75 or possibly even 100 attendees. For properties of 40 acres or more, that number should be even higher. I have attended many charity and political events on ranches where the owners opened their homes and yards for the party, and the guests parked in a pasture. We didn't bother anyone, or they didn't bother anyone, because there was plenty of space. The same rules for number of guests shouldn't be applied to larger properties as they are to single-family residential properties. One critical aspect of my thoughts...
Mr. Rosenberg, we're over the time. Could you just give us one sentence of conclusion?
It says 39 seconds here.
No, 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 way over.
All right, Chairman, sorry about that. Charity is the lifeblood of the community, we all know that, people have spoken about charities. Please, please, please protect those conditions that surround charities, and the issue has been raised of collateral businesses in, within weddings and such events, such as photographers and so forth. Those should not be considered as, as compensation in any way, that's just collateral to it. Thank you very much, sorry I went over.
Mr. O'Keefe, followed by Bob Field.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners. Good morning and thank you, I'm Ken O'Keefe, and I, along with my wife Christine here, live on Figaroa Mountain Road outside of Los Lejos in the San Ines Valley. There've been a lot of public testimony and comments recently saying that either there isn't really a problem, or suggesting that the interests serving, the interests of serving tourists are more important than the community at large. I previously spoke to you and described what we've been forced to endure for over four years now as a result of the so-called short-term rental loophole. We live adjacent to the Figaroa Farmhouse Commercial Wedding and Events Venue. Our property and all the adjacent properties are zoned ag, and are either under ag, the ag preserve program, enrolled in a conservation easement, or are public lands and part of the Los Padres National Forest. This is an important example of how this loophole is being dishonestly used, because I submit to you that nobody believes non-agricultural commercial uses are intended here. Certainly not high-impact weddings and events. I support the proposed amendments before you today, and hope they will give planning and development the tools they need to enforce our zoning rules. Our situation on Figaroa Mountain illustrates the severity of the problem. It illustrates that without adequate rules to enforce our zoning, properties such as mine will suffer the negative effects of a de facto rezone to commercial uses. If it can happen in the most rural and inappropriate area of the county, it can and will happen anywhere. We suffer from the most egregious violator of the intent of the land use code, yet planning development is not able to stop the violations. Consider the facts. The neighboring property is zoned Ag 2100 and is under Williamson, and is under a Williamson Act contract. Uses are allowed that would be considered incidental to agricultural uses and residential uses. In the case of the Figaroa Farmhouse, the ag commissioner and the Board of Supervisors have already determined that there is no agriculture, zero. Also, since the present ownership of the farmhouse, there's never been a resident living there. The only resident on the property has been a succession of wedding coordinators/managers that live in a residential ag unit. That's right, a building specifically allowed in support of an ag use that doesn't exist. The only use of the property is it, is its commercial use as an event center. I urge you to take action to prevent this de facto rezoning from continuing. There is much incentive to convert residential and agricultural lands to be used solely for commercial uses. This is destroying what's unique and desirable in Santa Barbara, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe, for coming down. Mr. Field, followed by Patricia Feingold.
Hello again, my name is Bob Field, and I still live in San Ines. I want to add the praise to the staff for working on this issue. It's, it's very complex, that's why you have a complex ordinance, it's been a tough one. I did participate in the working group along with the events industry, and I think the ordinance as proposed with some minor stuff, it does a pretty good job of laying out the rules. It does a pretty good job of laying out the rules for people who choose to play by the rules. I think, I will be critical and then get constructive at the end, I think it's a complete failure for people who don't wish to play by the rules. And this gets to the questions that Mr. Valencia and Mr. Blau sort of got to. Let's take a cold, hard reality shower. This events ordinance passed in 2004. I'm only aware of one application for a permit. Maybe this is outside of some rodeos and things, but the industry has pretty much ignored the permit process. It's been in place for eight years. A year ago, when this became a big issue, the whole industry was on notice, and I, from talking to PND, I don't think a single permit has been applied for. The landowners, the events people, the land use planners have not been playing by the rules. That's an objective statement. The problem is that any law to be effective requires monitoring, enforcement, and penalties. And we've touched on the penalty thing, which is on a separate path, but $100 isn't going to stop anything. The monitoring problem is that the public has been appointed by the county as the monitors, as the reporters of a violation. And as one of the prior speakers pointed out, when you see the tent, you hear the music, you see the cars, all you know is that there's an event. There is no way to tell whether it's that family's daughter that's getting married, whether they've rented it to some family from Orange County to get their daughter married, whether it's charitable, whether it's really a charitable event or there's some remuneration, whether or not any money has passed between the owners. When the event is complained about, it's probably a Saturday. PND gets the complaint Monday morning, and this is a completely unenforceable situation. It's over. The owner says, "No, I didn't do it. There weren't that many people. I didn't take any money." It's completely unenforceable. The only thing that can be enforced, as a previous speaker suggested, is, and as they do in Montecito, you've got a number of events that are allowable on a property in a year. And whether it's charitable or a big private party, your own daughter's wedding, a commercial event, it just doesn't matter. If it's three, with no disrespect to the public or PND, we can all count to three. If the event, it's number four in the year, you've got something you can enforce. There's two side benefits to this, if I can have just a couple of seconds to get constructive. The side benefits are, it spreads the pain of these events, because those of us who live out in these rural ag lands and residential neighborhoods take the hit from these events. So, a limited number spreads the pain. And to the extent, and I'm a big supporter of trying to provide supplemental income to ag properties, it also spreads the benefit. If someone is allowed a large number of events, they can make the capital investment, they invest in the website, and vend in coordinators, and capture the market. If it's limited to a small number of events, more agricultural properties can participate and get the supplemental income. So, I really encourage the ordinance as is with the addition of, but in no case more than X. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Feingold, then Bonnie Freeman, then Bonnie Hope.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Patricia Feingold, and I am here today representing the community of Moore Mesa Shores, which is located at the western border of Moore Mesa in the county of Santa Barbara. I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Moore Mesa Shores Homeowners Association, and in that capacity, I would like to express my support for the efforts of the County Planning and Development Department and their proposed amendments to the temporary uses special events ordinance. For the past six years, my neighborhood has had to endure the very frequent disruptions caused by a property owner who built what was supposed to be a single-family residence, but which turned out to be a short-term vacation, event, party rental, ongoing-for-profit business. Without taking up too much of the Planning Commission's time with all the details, I will say that the manner in which this property has been used has caused a great deal of inconvenience and misery for the residents of my neighborhood. The property in question sits on just about one-half acre, yet this location has been the site of commercial events with well over 100 to 200 attendees, their cars, and all manner of event and party rental trucks, vans, buses, equipment, et cetera, clogging and blocking our private narrow roads. Most importantly, the street upon which this house is located is unusually narrow, and from a safety standpoint, when the events take place, it is impossible for emergency vehicles to either enter or traverse the road. In addition, the Moore Mesa Shores Homeowners Association CCNRs specifically prohibit this kind of commercial activity. The HOA Board of Directors and a number of property owners have requested that the owners of what many are now calling "the party house" respect the wishes of the neighbors and the provisions of the CCNRs. Those owners instead continue to violate the CCNRs and ignore the pleas of their neighbors. No one associated with the property in question has ever obtained a permit for the numerous special events that have taken place there. Up to now, the owners and renters alike have taken full advantage of the loopholes in the law that exist, which make it easy for them to thumb their nose at the neighborhood and proceed with the unregulated commercial use of residentially-zoned land for other-than-residential purposes. Honestly, after what we in my community have been through, I would say both as a board member and as a homeowner in a residentially-zoned neighborhood that I would like to see an amendment to the temporary uses ordinance that allows no commercial events in my neighborhood. And to this, we should include the supposedly non-commercial events held in association with the short-term rental of property. It just does not work. The lots are all on the smaller side, most being a half acre or less, and the homes too close together. Add to that the aforementioned narrow roads, and you have an untenable situation. I support what planning and development is working hard to accomplish, but my board and I would like to see more stringent restrictions and regulations regarding commercial events taking place in smaller in-scope neighborhoods. I'd like to suggest that the amendment take an event location's lot size and proximity to neighbors into account and not allow any commercial events at locations that fit a certain profile. I'd also like to suggest that this apply to some degree to all special events held in such neighborhoods in terms of the number of attendees allowed. I would also like to appeal to the Planning Commission and Planning and Development Department to consider adding language to the amendment, which will take into account and acknowledge CCNRs which seek to regulate or even prohibit certain types of special events in their communities. In closing, I would like to thank County Planning and Development with particular praise to Noel Langle and Diane Black for their considerable efforts and professionalism in this matter. And finally, I would like to appeal to the County Planning Commission to consider the very real issues faced by communities like Moore Mesa Shores with its party house. We desperately need more guidance and oversight than what presently exists. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for that.
There is a question from...
Question for you. You said that the party houses have violated the current CCNRs.
Yes.
I'm curious why you don't enforce your CCNRs.
We can't. I mean, they, we're just completely ignored.
Well, actually, I think it's a legal matter, but I think you need to have your lawyer go file suit and get a restraining order against those people. And earlier, you asked if the county would enforce your CCNRs. The answer is no, they won't, and they can't. They have no ability to do that. But my question to you is, you need to go back and hire a lawyer and enforce the CCNRs, and you'll stop that problem.
Thanks, thanks.
Well, if we had a little bit more help on a zoning level, it would help our efforts, I think, too.
Thank you for coming. Ms. Freeman, followed by Ms. Hope, followed by Jessica Kipers, who is our last speaker. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Got another one.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. You received my letter that I sent in, so you know that I'm certainly in support of the special events permit. I didn't have these pictures at the time when I sent that in online, so I brought them down today, just as an example of what it's like in certain communities, small communities, particularly those that have an association. And as I expressed then, I hope, even if it's informal, that there's a communication that exists when there's ongoing problems with certain communities, not just ours. Enforcement, communication, those are things that are important because on our street, like, for example, I moved on this street 10 years ago, and there were no rentals and year leases, long-term or short-term. Now, we have this problem with this one home that fills up the street and blocks, and as of this last weekend, a third person has now seen, oh, they're benefiting, they're making all this money. Well, I'm just going to go away for the weekends, and now we have three short-term rentals existing on our street. And there's another problem with this, which is the enforcement area. You see something happening down the street, as several people have spoken to, and as neighbors, we're a residential community that we just are uncomfortable spying on our neighbors. And the whole thing of how you find out, and is there money transferred, all that stuff, it just, so some of the neighbors are now, it's caused, I want to speak to character of a community, too. It's changed the character of our community, because at least on this street, people sometimes don't leave for work if they see a big truck pull up, because they think, oh, maybe this is going to be something happening on a Friday, and we can get an inspector out. We have managed to shut down several unpermitted, you know, uses because it happened on a Friday when they were setting up. But otherwise, it's on a Saturday, and, you know, like someone else said. But it forces the community to be enforcers and policemen, and we just aren't used to that. We don't know how to operate that way. So, a lot of them will call me because I'm sort of community, you know, activist, and it's uncomfortable for me. But I just wanted to speak to the character of this, because I'm sure there are other communities like ours, and it's real hard to put into language of an amendment how you deal with this. But I think it has to be thought about along with all the other amendments that I think are very helpful. So, I think there was another picture that I wanted to show. Oh, well, it just fills up the cul-de-sac, and, you know, it's just blockage. And these are weddings and special events, and then they go into the evening, you know, on commercial shoots. Anyhow, it was just an example. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Bonnie Hope, Jessica Kipers, and Richard Good. He'll be our last speaker.
Good morning. My name is Bonnie Hope, and I own a disc jockey service based in Santa Barbara and have been in business since 1981, providing DJ services for weddings and other special events in local hotels as well as homes and ranches in the Santa Barbara County. And I have to say, I feel very proud to be a part of the special event community in Santa Barbara. I think that most of the other vendors that I work with have been incredibly professional and very thoughtful in terms of being in the community. I, as a person who makes a lot of noise at weddings and special events, am very careful to think about speaker placement, to think about what time an event needs to end, because we are in a neighborhood. And I also live in a neighborhood. I've lived, I've been a property owner for many years, and I've had, I raised my daughter living next to a family that played heavy rap music every night as I'm rocking my daughter to sleep and trying to play a little lullaby in a boombox so that she hears that instead of what's happening next door. So, there's so many levels of this issue, and it's very complex. But I have to say that there must be a way of simplifying it and creating an environment where we can still work and still provide special events in this community with respect to our neighbors. And unfortunately, there are a few different areas and situations that have been spoken to where I think that there's been an abuse of that. There's been an abuse of people using their homes for events way too often. But for most of the properties that I've worked at, that's not the case, and I don't want to see all of those properties and all of the events that bring so much to this community be punished for the few that are abusive. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hope. Jessica, Richard Good, and we also will have a speaker in the North County, if we can arrange it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're going to have to bear with me. I'm doing catch-up with all of this. I recently had a baby and have been hearing emails within our industry, but have not yet really had anybody give me everything so that I myself was educated enough to be able to speak. So, bear with me. I did want to make a comment on something that was recently stated. We do not believe that the interests of our tourism and special events community is more important than those of homeowners, but rather that because the special events industry and tourism industry is the livelihood for an extremely large portion of our community, that they be given equal respect and time. So, I thank you very much, the staff, for all of your time, you know, putting this stuff together. I am a wedding planner in town. I have been in business for seven years, and prior to that, I was working in restaurants and hotels, and my entire family is in this industry. And if we have this ordinance passed the way that it is, then our livelihoods will be extremely affected, and we will no longer be able to live in this amazing city. So, I think that to not be too redundant, but again, really drive the main issues of these complaints, we too believe that there needs to be some form of being held responsible and to not, again, have just the actions of a few really be the basis for limiting it for the many. And that, again, is the traffic, noise, and parking. Being somebody who lives in Santa Barbara, I can't stand when music goes past a certain time. I too have held my babies and had to have some music blaring, and it's frustrating. And traffic, I mean, it's all legitimate. So, I guess that my question to you is, when you enforce these rules for the size of events, what about those of the families that have just large families and just getting together is going to go ahead and already cap these smaller events? That's something that I'd like to hear more about. The length of the approval process. When I have a client hire me to help plan their wedding, for example, they very much do it about a year in advance. But we cannot move forward with any of the planning until we've got our venue confirmed. And if this process takes this long to get just the approval of the venue, how on earth are we supposed to go ahead and solidify who our photographers are and our caterers? I mean, it's a competitive industry, and as far as their choices of quality vendors, whom I only choose to work with, it's going to severely limit them on who they go ahead and have. Talking about final decisions as far as guest counts and layouts and all that jazz for venues, we sometimes don't even know literally until the week of the wedding exactly how the layout of the land's going to be, because it all depends on the final guest count. And we don't even know those final numbers until sometimes, you know, God, if we have an organized bride, you know, a month out, but very, very, very common, just literally two weeks prior to the event. So, I just ask that you guys kind of keep those things in mind and that how much it's going to, you know, really affect us. And that's it.
Thank you for coming and taking time away from your baby.
Mr. Chair, if I could just ask Mr. Langle to clarify the issue about a homeowner having a party at his home for a certain number of people, because I think there's some misunderstanding or misinterpretation that we're trying to apply a permit to that, and we're not doing that. So, I wonder if you could just speak to that.
We could...
If it is, but...
Can we just get through the last two speakers? I think it's a perfect question, and we do want to clarify it for everybody, but Mr. Good's at the microphone. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioner Brown and fellow commissioners. I spoke last fall. I had the pleasure of participating in the process and attended all of the meetings with staff. I echo the comments about the tremendous work that staff has done to work on this. But I think we still have some fundamental flaws to address. Commissioner Blau alluded to a couple of them, but I'm struggling with this definition of commercial and non-commercial and short-term rental. I don't understand why the short-term rental of property for a vacation rental is any different than the short-term rental of property for a special event. And so, maybe that's one definition we need to take a look at. You get into all this other stuff as you try and dissect, is the person really following the rules? I don't think that, or I think you're going to have some tremendous challenges getting access to private agreements and contracts with people in order to regulate what they actually rented that property on a short-term basis for. Counsel over here alluded to, and not my counsel, but the attorney over here alluded to a couple of things in this respect that I do think become challengeable. I really believe that, and I mentioned this to staff in the beginning, and I know that some county supervisors are resistant to this, but in Malibu, we take the... some county supervisors are resistant to this, but in Malibu, we take the approach of Montecito. And we just regulate all of the events. I didn't state my name. Again, my name is Richard Good. I am a long-term resident of Montecito. I'm also a member of the special event industry. But I think the county has done a lot of good things since last November. There's now an organization within the county level that, or there's a structure within the county level that's got communication going on between different departments. I had an experience right before the Montecito Planning Commission where I was at my home in Montecito, and I got home at 10:30. I have a three-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter, and the neighbor next door was having a very loud party. I picked up the phone, and in 15 minutes, the sheriff was at that property, had turned the volume down at the property, and even called me back to verify that the noise was at an acceptable level. So I do think there are a couple of cases where we do, we have some challenges. But by and far, to take this approach, I'm not sure we're really mitigating the issue. And other people have alluded to this. And so I wonder if it isn't a healthier approach and a simplified approach to look at all events and to say, they all have traffic, they all have noise, and they all have parking considerations for us. And is there a simple way for us to address that? I'm not convinced this approach is going to address it. I think we've done a lot of really good work, and I think we've tried, but it's so complicated, and there are some definitions in here that I think become difficult even for an attorney to decipher. So I really hope that we can, and I know I only have 10 seconds to, oh, I'm over, sorry. I really hope we can step back one more time and say, is there a simplified approach? Is there a way for us to tackle this that isn't so difficult for people to understand and that does really address those three issues that I think by and far are our considerations? But on another level, we don't have a room full of homeowners here who are having significant challenge. We have a couple of isolated cases. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration and all the work that's going into getting this right.
Thanks, Mr. Good. Frances Romero up in Santa Maria, you're on, Frances. Good morning.
Well, hi there. I don't know if you can see me, but can you hear me?
We can hear you and see you.
Oh, okay. I better sit up straight. Well, good morning, Chair Cooney, commissioners, members of the public and staff. My name is Frances Romero, and I work for Urban Planning Concepts. While we have many concerns about this ordinance, I believe that most of the speakers have addressed them, and I'll just try to highlight the new things. While the catalyst for this ordinance was initially impacts to neighbors from traffic and noise, and please do hold that thought, the revised ordinance seeks to exempt certain users from those impacts. For example, if a temporary use is hosted by a nonprofit, it does not eliminate impacts to neighbors. There will still be traffic and noise. However, this ordinance requires permitting for a commercial event where the only difference is a rental fee. While we understand that the budget for this project to review this ordinance, there was a decision to just revise what we already had to avoid CEQA concerns, we believe that a CEQA issue has been created for the following reasons. Number one, only the state has the right to provide or create categorical or statutory exemptions, not the county. And number two, economics are not supposed to be weighed in the environmental review process, and this ordinance clearly makes the economic gain for an owner or landlord the trigger to require discretionary permitting. I believe that I agree with Bob Veiled. An event is an event. Also, when you have the exemption, if you have five acres or more and there's no maximum number of events, so long as it's a non-commercial or charitable event, you're still creating impacts. I'd like to say that, we'd like to see a little more inclusion with a greater stakeholder group, similar to how you're doing with the winery ordinance. This is a county-wide ordinance, and only the north, the only north county influence has been our firm, Urban Planning Concepts, trying to participate, but all of the meetings have been held in Santa Barbara, so it's been very difficult. And sometimes, a few days or a week's notice is all that there's been, and no written materials have been provided in advance. This ordinance is confusing. It's not easy to read, and I'm a planner, so I would have difficulty trying to help a client with this. I think you have a lot of regulations that are in place, page 11 of your staff report under 5.61.e2, compliance with regulations, lists of variety of regulations that are in place. I want to say that I agree with all Jennifer Seaman's comments about the permit process, all of the comments made by the photographer and Philippe. As Philippe stated, anyone can have one neighbor that cannot be pleased, and I believe that that is largely driving some of these, some of this ordinance. To date, I've never seen a statistic for the number of citations that the sheriff has issued to any of these properties that are of concern, and I've not seen any code enforcement numbers as far as how many times code enforcement has been involved, and I'd love to see that. Also, just want to note that page 15B4 is a highly subjective criteria that's not quantitative. It states the proposed temporary use will not be detrimental to the comfort, convenience, general welfare, health and safety of the neighborhood, and will be compatible with the surrounding area. I think laws have to be understandable and easily definable so that everyone knows what the expectation is. So in closing, I have two requests. Please allow true public input like you're doing with the winery ordinance in the North County. And schedule at least two workshops in advance with written draft material so that a wide range of the impacted entities and individuals can provide input. And please rewrite this so that it's easy to understand. The ordinance should address all impacts generated by all users if impacts are the issue. An ordinance should be fair to everyone. It should not just pick and choose those who are deemed to have a more noble cause because of a subjective criteria. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Romero. Thank you for making the effort to get through to us. We did have a late speaker slip, Claudia Lopez. If there's anybody else out there that hasn't submitted a speaker slip and wants to address the commission, please get that speaker slip up now.
I really don't want to be redundant, but I did, sorry, I'm really short. But I did just want to speak so it will be on the record to just say that I'm a person who helps organize events here in Santa Barbara, and the way that everything is being set up right now as far as getting a special event use permit is super convoluted, super confusing. And this is, I actually went to USC and graduated in the School of Public Policy Management and Planning, and so, and I worked for the City of Las Vegas for quite some time in the planning department. And even I, who has some experience in the planning department, going over this, still just see so many loopholes and don't really, can't really grasp what exactly it is that you guys are trying to accomplish. So coming from someone from, that has experience from both sides, as someone who works in the event planning business and being behind the scenes as you are, I just feel like you guys need to go back to the drawing board and just really see what the real issues are. I think a lot of private owners that are on large ag properties have spoken to neighbors and have worked issues out as far as parking is concerned and make sure that events end at 10 o'clock and are really trying to just keep their businesses going and, you know, be a good citizen and not disrupt neighbors. But I feel like Philippe had mentioned earlier before, I think, one person, you're just never going to please everyone, but I think most business owners here in Santa Barbara really try to just not cause any problems and try to go by the rules and make sure that they respect neighbors and make sure that they use only vendors that are professional and that are local. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Okay, is that it for public speakers? Then we will come back to staff. I need to kind of do a time check. We've been at this item one for two hours, and I think we need a little bit of a break, but we also have two other pending items, so we should figure out when we're going to take those up, get as much done as we can by 2:00. You have to leave at 1:00. Okay. Well, we might lose one commissioner a little bit early, but Ms. Black, what do you suggest?
Mr. Chair, I think really all we need to do on this item is to hear from your commission in terms of general guidance, and I have a couple of thoughts to share. The other two items, I don't think will take longer than an hour and a half combined, even as they're projected, and maybe quite a bit shorter. I don't think there is a lot of public comment involved in either of those.
Okay.
So we could finish this, take a short break if you'd like, and then come back, or we could just keep going, whatever your commission prefers.
Well, I think we need a break at some point. The question I have right now for the commission is, do you want to take a few-minute break or finish up this item before we do that? Commissioner Blau?
I'll just finish up.
Okay. Anybody object to keeping, okay. Let's see if we can get the commissioner's comments in the next few minutes then.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if I could just offer a couple of observations. I think you've heard from a number of people that this is really complicated, and it is. And the reason it's complicated is because we were really attempting to use the framework that we had on regulating commercial events separately from non-commercial and charitable events. Your commission doesn't have to be constrained in that manner, and I think you heard from both sides of the issue that maybe just a number and forget what the event is for is a better approach. So you can have a specific number on a piece of property before any kind of permit is triggered. That would certainly be simpler. I think it would be easier for the staff to monitor, and it would be easier for the public to report upon, but it's a really different approach. So I think we're really seeking direction from your commission as to how you want to approach this. We've been at this for a while, and, you know, you've gotten our thoughts, but we can certainly go in a different direction if that's what the commission would like.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think the whole process here needs to be simplified a lot, but to make it easy to read. I remember when we started with the housing and affordable housing, we couldn't understand anything. And then Lisa Plowman made a matrix that you could just look at it and understand it. And that's what we need. We need a matrix that's very easy to read and spells out everything in a one-page thing. You can read things. My second thought is that acreage of five acres and under probably should be limited to three events a year. And then there's especially, I felt that these ranches that have 300, 500, 1,000 acres, you know, the impact there is very small, but remembering that it's still ag land, it's still ag, and that's for the purpose for. This other is a side thing. I would allow them to have six events. It's just my first and first thoughts on it, and I'm willing to hear from my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Blau? Thank you, Commissioner Valencia.
Yeah, I agree with, mostly agree with Commissioner Valencia. I'm having difficulty with the issue of the commercial versus non-commercial, or even I have great issue with the fact that in a charitable event, the owner can't take any revenue from the property. That's real foreign to me. I mean, I sponsor a number of charity events, and it's not unusual for us to rent the facility. It's just, I mean, it happens at the country club or golf course all the time. They don't do it for free. I also, I think it was Mrs. Seaman, if I say that correctly, with the 1,000-acre ranch, is that the, when they have events all the time? I see no reason for limitation on that. They could have 100 of them. Now, that might be where you want to do a CUP so that you make certain that we're not impacting the adjacent property owner or having some other problem. And obviously, if they're doing 100 events a year, 50 events a year, the cost of trouble going through a CUP is not that burdensome. I think there's no reason to have a CUP for any other use, particularly limit to four per year. I also agree that the process should be one where you fill out a two-page application, you certify that you are having onsite parking, that you're having parking controls, that whatever the staff wants to create for the rules, but it should be like a $200, $250 fee. They fill out the application, the staff person reads it to make sure it's filled out correctly, they have their event. And I don't think you need to do, you don't need to do a CUP. I saw the staff report, the staff was proposing that it would take no more than 30 days. I'm not believing that for a minute. I don't think this staff can do anything in 30 days or less that's as complicated as this is. Plus, we've seen people abuse the appeal process, and they will abuse the appeal process. And I agree with the wedding planner that talked about, you can't plan a wedding six or months or a year in advance. That's just not practical. So I think there needs to be, if you want to have a limitation of four per year without a, and it's residential property or it's commercial property or it's farmland, I don't care. If you want to make a legitimate business to where you have more than four per year, it solves our problem with our gentleman figure of amount. That guy would have to do a CUP and likely would not get it approved. However, in Mrs. Seaman's case where it's 1,000 acres and the nearest owner is a mile away, why do they care? And I do disagree with the person that brought us the Apple Creek Ranch. You know, if you have a ranch property or a farm property that's more profitable to hold weddings and you're not adversely affecting neighbors, that's great. That's good by me. I'm not going to force somebody to be a farmer when he can't make a living doing it. That doesn't seem to be practical. So again, I think that we talked about it was the traffic issues, the parking issues, the noise issues. If all those can be demonstrated to not be a problem to anybody else, let them hold as many weddings and special events as they want. It doesn't affect them. Now, if it is a problem with parking and we don't have, and it's not adequate roadways, and it's a problem for the neighbors, then we have the limitation. But let's be practical about this, and I agree, make it much more simple, and none of this $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 CUP fees. I mean, it really should be, even for a major farm, should be more than a couple thousand dollars that the process is. It's not that complicated. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau. Commissioner Brooks?
Okay, thank you, Chair Cooney. You know, several people have said, well, what are we trying to accomplish today, or how can we simplify this? You know, I go back to the basic finding that, you know, we're going to have to make when we solidify this, and we have to look to the community values. And I think the most simple way of approaching this is, you know, is looking at the existing zoning. That's what makes Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara County, community plans have established residential zoning, agricultural zoning, commercial zoning. After reading the staff report and kind of tuning in on Montecito, I think I would agree with the increased number for the home events at 75 versus 50. So I think I've heard quite a bit of support for that. As far as keeping the uses incidental to the existing, especially with the ag land, I guess I have to disagree with Commissioner Blau. I feel that, you know, there's ag zoning, we have ag preserves, there, that is supposedly the number-one priority of our county is to preserve agriculture. If one group, you know, decides, well, wait a minute, you know, this is better for me to have a farmhouse, a wedding, you know, we will lose that agriculture. The number, rather than these definitions, we haven't heard from our own county council, but, you know, we've heard from some others that, you know, these might be very difficult to define. So I'm leaning toward this idea of a specific number of events. You know, a neighbor observes whatever is, we decide on, or, you know, the decision-makers come up with, whether it's three events or four events. The spacing of the events will be, if we do come up with a number, I think maybe 30 days is too much. You know, I think if we're saying, although we have to look at our weather patterns and everything else, but, you know, we need to space that number of events, whether it's going to be three or four or six. And if we want to go and look at the size of the parcel, I don't know. You know, I just think with the larger ag parcels, you know, we just don't want to get down a slippery slope of saying, okay, you're better off as a, you know, a party venue than ag. And, you know, these larger events, there's less impacts possibly, you know, on the neighbors per se, but what about the impact of this actual zoning of agriculture? I went, I looked closely at the special events permit. It seems quite, you know, almost not, I don't say it's unwieldy, but if it could go through once for each... once for each one event, you know, I don't agree with the idea of, well, let's have one of these permits, and, you know, we'd give it the blanket for the three or the four events that we decide. You know, I think, you know, one permit for one event, you know, wedding planners, they, as you say, sometimes you don't know all the details, but, you know, that might help you if you know in advance and you tell your clients, well, we do need to know, you know, kind of the parameters of the event you put in the application. I'm going to say that a special events, I'm just going to pull, might just take, might take a few weeks, you know. I hear that, oh, nothing the county does, but, I mean, if we make a commitment to something like this, then, you know, we'd have to give the people in the industry, you know, very quick feedback on that. The idea of, one, we've had a little bit of input from some people, if ag won, this is especially important out in the San Inez Valley, because of the ranchettes that are there, that perhaps the ag one zone, you know, could be considered, you know, residential. I mean, it is ag, but, you know, the residential uses are important there. I mean, as someone who, you know, I represent constituents in the North County, I don't know how staff is going to go if you want to proceed, but, you know, I did hear from several sources that, you know, maybe having a meeting, it's going to be difficult because we're not going to be meeting as a group in the North County because of the renovations. So, if we were to come back with this in September, we would be here, or, so perhaps if there could be some kind of accommodation to the public. So, I think that's where I am. If you need anything. Again, I want to support the zoning, incidental uses, and I appreciate the staff doing all of this, but, you know, maybe we'll keep some of the work. Certainly, the process is going to be helpful, and it's certainly bringing out issues and concerns on both sides. So, we're heading in the right direction.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, I know it's your turn now. I just take 15 seconds. I failed to talk about the penalty fines. I think the first and second instead of 100, 200, it should be 500 and 1,000, and then on to 2,000 or whatever. I mean, you need to get their attention. It's not a, hey, you forgot to dot the i's or cross the t's. It should be something that gets their attention. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, staff has got a yeoman's challenge here, trying to write a document or trying to fix a document that's complicated to begin with, and it makes it more complicated. But as you can see, there's much interest, and I think that there are many good things that they've tried to work out for all sides. But here are my particular concerns. I think the size of the property is really important, and under current standards, it just doesn't work. You've heard the testimony from the Mor Mesa Shores homeowners, where a large number of attendees, because they're allowed, can use the property, can hold an event. And I just think that you've got to have some sort of scalable permit that allows, if it's a larger property, you can have more people. And of course, that would require a CUP, as Commissioner Blau suggested. But I do think that all events, commercial, non-commercial, charitable, all have exactly the same impacts if they're all exactly the same size. And I think it's sort of unfair that you could have a commercial event that's smaller than a charitable event, and it would have to go through more permitting than a charitable event would be. So, I guess I have some concerns about that, and I think it would only be fair to have a permit for each event, not for the ones that the homeowner has for 75 or under. That's going to happen anyway, but I don't think, I don't think that's appropriate to have a permit for that. I think homeowners just do that, and where I live, I don't ever see events of 75 people in private homes, maybe on larger properties, but certainly not where I live. I do think there needs to be a limitation on the number of events. I don't think you can have 20 events a year on one property. I think that's, even if it's 1,000 acres in Halama, I think that's way too much, because then the event sort of trumps what is the primary purpose of the property. But I do think there needs to be some sort of spacing between events. I think if a homeowner, if a property owner is given, say, 10 events a year, you can't have them all in the summer months or all in the month of June. They'd have to be spaced out throughout the year, just to reduce some of the impacts. I would like to speak to a moment to event duration. In speaking to Mr. Lengel, he indicated that breakdown and setup could occur on either side of the day of the event. I think it's important that, particularly if there's going to be a permit, that neighbors and the community are aware of, what is the true duration of this event? Is it set up for two days and break down for two days, or is it, when is this going to occur? So, I think that's important to include that information in the permit, and so the permit would cover that period for that to take place. You know, I am very concerned about how the so-called incidental use of property for events, whether they're commercial or charitable, will start changing the character of our zoning. We've already seen it in some of the residential properties. They're not residential, they're set up to be party places. And I don't think that's the purpose of what we're trying to achieve here. I think it's important to keep our zoning intact. Residential property should be residential. I want to enjoy the peace and quiet of where I live. I don't want to be bothered with parties. If I live on an acre, would I want to have my neighbor have continual use of his property as a commercial event site? I don't think that's appropriate. I think it starts to change the very nature of our zoning, and that's not why we're here. We have zoning for a reason, and I would hope that whatever is crafted would be able to respect that zoning and the reason for it. I think those are my initial comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I think it's a wise qualification you made to say they're your initial comments, because I don't think we're there at the point where we can make specific comments or all come together and say, one event is good for this type of event, five acres is good for this type of party. There is, what has been demonstrated up to now is, despite our good intentions to involve the community and the second or third public hearing that this body has had on this ordinance, I don't think we're ever going to achieve a result that's acceptable to 100% of the people that are concerned with it, either the neighborhoods, or the conservation groups, or certainly not the event planners. And looking through the attempts of staff to strike a balance between these competing interests, I really applaud particularly Mr. Lengel's efforts to try and address every situation in a way that was fair and could be defended in terms of attempting to solve the problem that has been brought to us in the first place. And, you know, it requires extra sections and extra definitions, and it's a real legislative challenge to try and hit that middle point that is best for everybody but doesn't satisfy anybody. But you're getting close, and I really, I really could support what you have on the books right now. I'd prefer to see fewer events permitted by the special events permit, but I think it's a great idea to try and deal with the special events with their own permit structure. So, while it's tempting to say, throw it all away and start over again with something simpler, I'd rather keep going with what we've got and maybe make a few adjustments to it after hearing from the Montecito Commission, and get something on the books that at least arrests the notion that someone can come into Santa Barbara County, purchase a piece of property, be it ag or residential, and have in mind the idea that they're going to create a commercial use in that zone. And I think that's what's happening now. It's not every neighborhood, but I think most neighborhoods now can cite examples where their peace and quiet has been affected by the recurrent use of the property for what amounts to a commercial enterprise. Yes, I suppose any regulation is going to be a problem, but if we say that enforcement is going to be difficult and admit that we don't have the forces to go out there and follow up in every case, I don't think we'd ever try and regulate any activity in the county, because that's true across the board. Look at the winery ordinance that we're dealing with. We can spend months or years figuring out what size events can occur in ag zones for the purpose of tasting wine or enjoying the setting, but we still have to figure out a way to induce compliance, and I think that's going to be a challenge. But that is not a reason that we should not go forward with this ordinance. So, I think we're on the right track. I agree with comments made by everyone on the commission, and I think we have to keep working with what we've got and try and come up with a solution that we can implement in the near future as opposed to far away. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I think staff was looking for some direction, maybe, so I'm wondering if we couldn't take the six or seven major issues and sort of poll the commission, because I think what they'd like to do is report back to the Montecito Commission, you know, what are, where we might have consensus, where we might disagree, so that they can then discuss those particular items. We'll come back and find out what their comments and thoughts are based on our comments and thoughts, because currently, they're not, they have the consensus either. I mean, they're maybe pretty far apart with a few of them. So, for example, you know, we're talking about the 75 being, I agree. I mean, in my, not in my family, but for my brother-in-law's family, just to be a family, it's 300. That's just aunts, uncles, and cousins, you know, so it's kind of like 50 is sort of ridiculous. But I've had events at my house where I have, you know, charitable boards meet for cocktails and orders, and it's more than 50. So, I'm just saying, that's one area we agree, maybe the number of events per year, we agree. Let's see if we agree on the commercial versus charitable, same little limitation. I would just like to poll everybody to see where we're at.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Black?
And commissioners, I think it does boil down to, well, two issues would be really instructive. The number of people that constitute an event, so is it 50 or 75? And then whether or not the commission wants us to continue to treat different events differently, because the way the ordinance amendments are structured now, the commercial events are treated differently than non-commercial and charitable events. And I've heard several commissioners say they don't necessarily agree with that, that it should just be a number of events. That would be a really helpful clarification.
And maybe we should, county council, too, because we're hearing from a couple of lawyers that that violates certain constitutional provisions, that we can't treat them differently, that if we, you know, we can't say SEQA is not an issue here because there's not, there's no profit involved, yet SEQA is involved here because there's profit involved. I have a problem with that. I think that is a problem, so.
Mr. Munoz?
Chair Cooney, members of the commission, basically just to respond briefly to those issues. The trigger for SEQUAs is when the local entity here, the county, would be issuing a discretionary permit. So, if something doesn't require that discretionary permit, then we would be looking to have a case where SEQA may not apply. In regard to some of the other issues raised, again, the ordinance focuses on the use rather than the users, and it's doing so in a way that is based on number of attendees and number of times per year, which are objective, neutral factors.
So, let's address the two issues that Ms. Black has identified in order to give some guidance, if we can do that in a few minutes, and if we can't, then we'll defer that discussion as well. I did hear support for increasing the size of the exempt events from 50 to 75 attendees. Does anyone want to speak against that? So, I think we're pretty unanimous that that's a good direction. Now, with respect to differentiating, sort of a foundation of the work that's been done between charitable, nonprofit, political, and commercial events, is there a desire to eliminate that distinction that is made in the current ordinance? Commissioner Blau has indicated he would like to see it eliminated. As Commissioner Brown, how about you, Commissioner Brooks?
Mixed feelings. I mean, I thought that was why, you know, this whole thing started, to get the definitions in the ordinance. I think maybe we could still get the definitions in the ordinance, but maybe, you know, depending what the, you know, the ultimate outcome is, you know, if we came up with a number, something that's quantifiable, that would help with enforcement, which is certainly, you know, not in existence right now, I don't know. Can we do both? I'd like to think we could, and I just think all that work that went into this, you know, if it's not ultimately going to be the criteria, you know, if we just say, okay, events, period, and numbers, I don't know, I just, maybe just for everybody's edification to see, you know, the people in the industry, people who are, you know, 501(c)(3)'s, the nonprofits, I think having it in, having the language in the ordinance doesn't hurt.
Commissioner Blau?
If I could follow up on our attorney's comment. I think what I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the event that triggers whether or not, it's quantifiable, to say that this is charity, so we're not going to do SEQA, and we're not going to make them do a CUP. This is a commercial venture, we're going to make you look to the SEQA issues, and I don't think that flies. I think that's not, I think he just told us you can't do that. It's a subjective issue, not an objective issue. If we have a CUP, we have to do SEQA. So, that would be, means if we decided it has to be done for a commercial event, then it has to be done for all charitable events, and I don't think we want to go there.
All right. Well, there's two different levels of concern. Well, let's leave to Mr. Munoz and his colleagues in the county council's office to identify the legality of any ordinance language, not just this, but any. But what I'd like to hear today is if people, for reasons other than just our legal constraints, think there shouldn't be a distinction between the two types, two general types of events, but instead they should be based on the size, frequency, use of a property, et cetera. So, I've heard from Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's on the size, the property, and the number of events. That's kind of, size of the property, number of events, the number of people at the event.
Commissioner Valencia?
Mr. Chair, this is just general comments, and I think I already made my general comments in the ballpark that I'd like to go into without getting into specifics. I'd like to see what the staff comes back with, a little bit more refined based on our comments, and then, but I like the 50 to 75. I like the three events instead of four with maybe allowing them one special event, you know, for something. And the big ranches, I think six events for them would be fine. The, you know, you've got a ranch that 300 to 500, 1,000 acres, there's nobody out there. They're not hurting anybody, or you can't hear anything. So, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure-- Okay, well, I'm not sure we're getting clear direction here. I think there may be reasons to distinguish between the types of events. Certainly, the, what we're trying to do, I think, is amend as little as necessary to accomplish the basic goal of eliminating the repeated commercial use of residential and ag properties. So I'm a little reluctant to take the whole ordinance, including those separations between the profitable and non-profitable, and throw those out. It may have a legal problem with it, but I don't think we're going to decide that today. And certainly, the issue's been raised. We're all on alert. That's something that, that within staff, we have to think more about. But I support what has been made as a distinction now, simply because it adds as little as possible to the regulation with still effort to accomplish the goal. So that's not a clear direction. Commissioner Blau, back to you, and then I want to wrap up the discussion for today.
The last thing I think we need, maybe to discuss a little bit and address, and we heard it from several speakers today, is the issue of the complexity of the application, the complexity of the process, and I agree that it is, as it's established now, it's way too complex, way too cumbersome, and way too expensive. So if my fellow commissioners agree, I think we need to give staff direction to come back with a simpler application. And I would suggest that you list the criteria sort of like in a checkbox thing. So if you do all these things, we'll give you the permit over the counter. If you have got adequate parking on site, if you provide a certain number of toilets per patron, if you have traffic controls, I mean, I'll let staff be the one that will create those things, but what set of conditions could you have a planner be at the table and take their $250 to do the review and issue the permit, rather than having, the CUP, for me, just does not work on a person that's going to use their property three times a year. It's just way too expensive, way too cumbersome.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, maybe I can ask for clarification, because I thought you were talking about exempting four permits per year on properties, not requiring a permit at all, which is consistent with the current ordinance.
Being either commercial or?
Well, right now, there's a distinction between commercial and nonprofit and non-commercial events, but what I thought I heard at least three commissioners say is, you're not concerned about that distinction, and if we're going to exempt those events, then I'm not sure which permits you're talking about putting through.
Well, I still think you, it seems to me you still wanted, you still want a permit to be issued, because one of the things I think you want to have happen is you want people to understand that even if you have an event for 300 people, whether it's commercial or non-commercial, you want them to do certain things. You want them to control the traffic, you want to control the parking, so to have them come in and get this permit for a couple of dollars, all it does is it just gives them a chance to hear from staff that, look, these are the conditions you can have the event at, do these things so we don't have problems with the neighbors, and that works out great for them. And again, it sort of registers the number of events. It also gives you a chance, I mean, yeah.
Okay, before you respond to that, Mr. Munoz has his light on.
Yes, Chair Cooney, members of the commission, just to clarify, it would be within your commission's discretion to determine whether to recommend something as exempt or non-exempt, and that decision of whether something is exempt or non-exempt would be the determination of whether or not SEQUAs triggered.
So if we determine that, say, four events a year on any property of any size is exempt from an ordinance, that could trigger a SEQA review of the ordinance?
Chair Cooney, if I understand that question to be, if the determination is made to allow four events per year, it would be, anything less than that, if that is determined to be exempt from a planning permit, then that exemption would, in that instance, preclude SEQA review?
Yeah, if we made, but would the, is the ordinance itself where we made the determination in our discretion, it's not ours, it's the board's ultimately, but if the board makes the decision to exempt XYZ, is not the ordinance subject to a review of the environmental impacts?
The consideration of the adoption of an ordinance amendment itself would be subject to SEQA. Whether or not there's an exemption that applies would be a different circumstance.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, just to tell you what we've done so far, because we have not relaxed the level of discretionary review on the ordinances that are before you today, we have said that the ordinances themselves would be exempt from SEQA because the standard hasn't changed. And so I think that's an important point, too, is that the level or the number of events is somewhat constrained that we can provide for in the ordinance without doing SEQA review.
Right.
But I think we can get to where some commissioners have suggested today, without doing extensive SEQA review.
Okay, well, I think we have to stop today as a practical matter and digest what we have. I have no objection at all to putting this back on another agenda before we have the October meeting to make our final recommendation. We do have some time on some of these agendas, but I think we are not being productive to continue the discussion at this point. So, Ms. Black, the last word.
Mr. Chair, why don't, I would make a recommendation that we just continue this discussion on September 5th, and maybe we can come back with a couple of different schematic approaches to this and get input from the public and from your commission, since we do have time on that day.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to our meeting of September 5th.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. This hearing is concluded. We will pick up item number two at 12:15. We've reached item number two on our agenda. Mr. Villalobos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Debbie Waldecker, California State Parks to consider 12 DVP1 and 12 CDP 59, applications filed on January 10th, 2012, and April 21st, 2011, and to determine that the project is exempt from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to Section 15302(c) of the state guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, sir. Do we have site visits or ex parte contacts to report? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, this is in the 3rd District. I made a site visit this morning.
Okay, that's all we have for this, so we have Ms. Liu, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I will be presenting the Gaviota State Park Water Tank Replacement Project. The water tank is located within Gaviota State Park, just as, just before the turnoff to go towards Hollister Ranch, so rather than entering into the park, you would drive down the road as though you're going to Hollister Ranch, and then there's a raised area with eucalyptus growth there where the water tank is located. This shows another view of the approximate location of the water tank. It's on an elevated bluff overlooking the state park and is screened by the eucalyptus trees surrounding it. Here's a coastal records view of the site. The tank would be located in here. This gives you an idea of the view from some of the other areas of the state park and the pier there. So the proposed project is to replace an existing 50,000 gallon water tank. The existing tank is made of wood slats with metal bands holding it together, and it's been leaking for some time. This tank provides the water to the campground at Gaviota State Park. The replacement tank would be approximately the same size. It would be 53,000 gallons in size, and it would be a prefabricated metal tank, and the color would be hunter green. The paint chip is not showing up great on the screen, but it's a dark green color that we reviewed with the chair of the Board of Architectural Review, and would help to screen the tank from view. The tank would be 16 feet 1 inch in height. The existing tank is 17 feet in height, so it would be slightly lower. The area where the tank is located is known to have cultural resources sensitivity, therefore an extended Phase 1 archaeological survey, including soil test pits, was conducted. That survey found that the project, including the water tanks, trenching for replacement of water lines, and replacement of abandoned underground cistern, would avoid sensitive locations on the site. Additionally, the project would be monitored by an archaeologist and a Native American representative throughout construction. With regard to biological resource policies, the high point to discuss in this has to do with butterfly aggregation sites. The eucalyptus trees that surround the water tank are known to serve as a butterfly roosting site during certain times of the year. The new tank would not be located. Additionally, policies require that adjacent development should be set back 50 feet from butterfly trees. The new tank would not be located 50 feet away from the butterfly trees because the tank would be replaced within the existing, the footprint of the existing tank, and also because gravity flow is required for the water service to the campground. However, impacts to butterflies are not expected because no trees would be removed. And then, in order to install the tanks, just a small percentage, I think less than 1% of the vegetation would be temporarily pruned so that they could lower the prefabricated tank into place in the location of the existing tank. So additionally, all of this work would occur outside of the butterfly roosting season. So for those reasons, impacts to butterflies are not expected. Finally, with regard to visual resource policies, coastal policies require that scenic qualities of coastal areas be protected, that views to, from, and along the beach be protected, and that structures be compatible with the surrounding area. The replacement tank would be consistent with these requirements because it would be in the location of the existing tank, screened by large mature eucalyptus trees. It would be a compatible color with the surrounding area, would be of a similar size and location as the existing tank, and it would not block views to, from, or along the beach. In summary, the project would be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan, including the coastal land use plan, and compliant with the requirements of the Article 2 Coastal Zoning Ordinance, specifically with the purpose and intent of the Rec. Zone District, because the water tank serves to support the recreational facilities at Gaviota State Park. Therefore, staff recommends that you make the required findings for the project, including SEQA findings, determine the project exempt pursuant to Section 15302(c) of the California Guidelines for the California Environmental Quality Act, as specified in the notice of exemption adopted by the California State Parks. And just here, I'll note that the California State Parks issued their, took lead agency status for environmental review and issued their own notice of exemption, which is included as an attachment to your staff report. So we ask that you determine the project exempt pursuant to that notice of exemption. Approve case number 12 DVP1, subject to the conditions of approval, and approve case number 12 CDP 59, subject to the conditions of approval. That will conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Liu. Do we have questions? Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Liu, concerning the monarch overwintering, do you have some document that says that they leave on one January? The only reason I ask is that I noticed that where I am, overwintering sometimes occurs for, I think for the Maravilla project, it was through March that there was no construction permitted on that, not adjacent to the overwintering site, and I just wondered how you got that one January date.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, that date is, that sort of time period is, was established by the state parks archaeologists and also is consistent with, not archaeologists, I apologize, biologists.
Okay.
And also is a time period that we would frequently use as, at the county, as a typical roosting period, but.
So that is, that is a current county standard?
I believe, I believe so. I can, I can double check.
I'm just wondering if, if there are aggregations in the month of January, there's no provision in here for postponing the place, the replacement of the tank? And I was just wondering what, if that's something that can be considered, or, I guess, what I really want to know is how you've sort of got to that January point, and if there's, if there's any sort of way to provide some flexibility if they are there through the month of January, February, I don't know, it just, they're always, you know, it sort of depends upon when they come, but.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, my suggestion would be to, if, to add language to require a survey for a roosting site prior to the initiation of construction in addition.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I noticed when I was out there and I was parked in front of the area, when I looked beyond the existing tank, it seemed as if there's almost like a full ocean view. So are there any visual impacts from that side? Not that, there was no place, I don't know if it would have been visible down the hill from the beach, because I didn't go there, but I just noticed that then as I was leaving the site. What have you observed there, and do you think we've addressed those visual impacts, not from the road, not Hollister, but from the other side?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, I think that as far as consistency with, with the applicable coastal policies, because there's an existing tank there that is approximately the same size, that there, it's already in place, and therefore this project wouldn't be contributing to any obstruction of views. Additionally, because of the color of the tank and the proximity of the trees around it, maybe screening part of it, but not all of it, I think it would still be consistent with the, with the policies as far as protection of public views.
Okay. I'm also looking at the fire department letter, and I had some concerns, I imagine, you know, there'll be some replanting or reseeding, you know, after the, the water tank is put in. But there are some buildings, and I believe there's a communications tower, you know, adjacent to it. The fire department is asking for the removal or the moving of a fire hydrant, you know, on a building there. I was wondering, could we add a condition as far as, I know the fire department needs access, you know, easy access to it, but it seems that the fence line right now, if you're, you know, coming and going out Hollister Road, it's pretty open and it's pretty out there, you know, is there any possibility of a little bit more screening in front of that fence? Or maybe the fence just needs to be replaced, and maybe it will be replaced, it's just visually not very appealing right now.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, we do have a state parks representative, so we, I think we could talk to them about adding additional screening as a part, as a project condition. As proposed, they, the only vegetation that would be added would be hydroseeding to prevent erosion. Another, another item to consider is that the eucalyptus trees, because of the chemicals that they put out in their leaves, it's difficult to establish understory plants anywhere where there's eucalyptus leaves on the ground, so, but I think we could, you know, bring the state parks' rep up to talk about adding more screening in front of the existing fence.
Okay, it could be, you know, a security concern, too, so, you know, maybe just a brief comment, if, no?
Well, let's just finish up with our questions, and then we'll go to the applicant, okay? Did you have anything else? Okay, and I see no other questions, so perhaps we should invite the state park representative to come up? to come up. I thought maybe you were here to monitor the rowdy crowd we had this morning.
Well, I do that for GAVPAC. That was the first part since I go to that as well. So everybody thought I was security the first night, so I doesn't mind for that either. But, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Dan Fallett. I'm the Sector Superintendent for all the parks in Northern Santa Barbara County, from El Capitan or Santa Barbara all the way north to Vandenberg Air Force Base. So I'm more an operations folk individual, but I do know I can provide you with as much information as I can, and I'll be glad to give you any further information as needed.
The question that's been raised is the fencing, whether that's going to be replaced, and if so, is there going to be an effort made to somehow conceal it? Or what are the plans as far as you know?
The fencing itself, and I concur with your view of that fencing as well. I will tell you that there was a huge tree that went down over that. So it is in a little bit of disrepair. Hopefully that will be completed, if not part of this project, right after because it is a security issue. Obviously ensuring that high-quality water and everything that goes to the visitors and the residents, not residents in this case, but all the visitors to the park, has a safe and secure water source. So I would agree with the county as well as the under, getting some sort of growth underneath the eucalyptus trees. I'm not a biologist. The individual that submitted the paperwork on behalf of our department is our biologist out of San Diego, so we can definitely look at that and see what we can do. But my hope is, and my goal is to have that fencing replaced.
Any other questions of Officer Fallett? I don't see any. Thank you very much for coming. Okay. So are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission on this subject? Do we have any speaker slips, Commissioner Blough? Okay. Doesn't appear. So Ms. Lou, any follow-up?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, no additional comments to add, although I am working on language to add a requirement to require a survey for butterflies prior to the start of construction and hold off on construction if, in fact, roosting is found prior to the start of construction.
I know that's a concern, and you've mentioned several others which, in effect, by conditioning the project raises a concern for me in terms of should this be exempt? You know, is this not falling over into the area where we need to do some environmental analysis to approve a project? And I know this isn't unique to this project. We've had several others where we've had this discussion, but for example, the monitoring of any ground disturbance, and there is going to be ground disturbance for new piping and so forth, the monitoring by a Native American observer and a state archaeologist is part of the project. And it seems to me the purpose of that monitoring is to minimize the potential environmental effect of disturbing cultural artifacts or remains that might be unearthed by that work. So, you know, here we are. It's the state's determination that this project is exempt. Arguably, it's not, but given the fact that the main feature of this project is the tank and not the other attributes, it doesn't seem like this is the place to make a legal stand with the state. But I'd be perfectly willing to support that if clearly the exemption didn't cover the basic work here. So I think you've done a good job with what you've had to work with, and we shouldn't disturb the state's determination. In fact, we're asked to make our own finding that the exemption applies, questionable though it is. Okay. It's a third district item. Commissioner Brooks, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, I am. You made me very aware of our policies about the exemption when you spoke to that issue last week, and I was thinking about that as we went through. But I guess I thought that when the state made that determination that, you know, we would be safe with that. And so I see no other concerns, I have to say. I spoke to the gentleman at Gaviota. They are full, and I guess because of what has happened at El Capitan with the construction, they're even, you know, more impacted this year, which is good. I'd like to see Gaviota being well-used and they need water. So I will, with that, move staff's recommendation as presented to us with the additional requirement that was provided today regarding the biological resources.
I'll second it, but I just have one comment. Do we need to have a survey, or could we just simply have the county biologist authorize commencement of the work? Just that that's an easier condition to comply with. I know we have a biologist, and she knows when the monarch butterflies are there. She could say, yes, it's safe to start this date, or she puts another date in there.
Mr. Chair, I had actually drafted some language, and we won't be monitoring this project because it's a state project, the state will be doing it. So I think, you know, for efficiency's sake, since their biologist prepared the application, it would be just as easy for them to make the determination. So I thought inserting language under the biological resource protection points in the project description to just say, prior to initiation of work, a survey confirming absence of overwintering roosting butterflies shall occur, no work shall occur while butterflies remain on site. And then it leaves it to them.
And the second agrees.
Diane, I think it's not while the butterflies remain on site. I think it's about if they're aggregating.
Well, I meant overwintering or roosting butterflies are on site.
Is that amendment acceptable to you? As the maker of the motion?
Yes, it is.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Vialobos.
Commissioner Blough?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
And Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Officer Fallett, and helping us on this. And we'll move to Item Three on our agenda when Mr. Vialobos has a chance to read it into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Jerry Ambrose, Wireless One Consulting Services, on behalf of MetroPCS, to consider 10 CUP-19 and 10 CDP-61 applications filed on May 28, 2010, and July 2, 2010, and to determine that the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15303 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay. I know we've had this project before us, and some of you had a chance to visit at that time. Do we have additional ex parte declarations, anybody? Okay. I did check the last time I was down there to make sure that the existing facility was still of minimal visibility. And I will raise a question later regarding the new installation, but that's the only declaration. We have Mr. Ritter back. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As the Chair had indicated, the project was before the commission, a little over a year ago, on April 13th, where some additional guidance was given to staff. So we brought it back and worked with the applicant as well as the Chumash Indian representatives. And we addressed the issues that were raised in there. So this project that's coming before you, again, no changes to the actual project, but some of that, the information that was requested, was added to the staff report. So it's a little different, or reads a bit different, but the project in and of itself has not changed. The project is located in the southeastern most part of the county, at Rincon Point, just east of the city of Carpinteria, at the Santa Barbara and Ventura County line. The subject parcel is a 10.9-acre lot, zoned REC for recreation and open space, is designated as a rural parcel in the coastal zone, is currently developed as a county-owned park, and is known as Rincon Beach Park. The next slide shows a close-up of the proposed site plan for the MetroPCS project, which currently has an AT&amp;T cell site facility. The proposed site includes 260 square feet of leased area, as well as two 12-foot poles with two antenna panels and one microwave dish. You'll notice on the slide, to the east, is the proposed location that's being envisioned for the Carpinteria Sanitary District's lift station. The next slide shows a close-up of the proposed MetroPCS facility itself. Elevations were also proposed, or provided by the applicant. From the north, the 12-foot poles would be situated adjacent to the existing mature vegetation, mature tree, as well as the black fence would be surrounding this. It's cut away here so that you could see the inside of the facility, but it would be surrounded by a black vinyl fence. And this, again, is viewed from the north, which would be from the 101 corridor. As viewed from the east, you'd be looking through the AT&amp;T site, and again, black vinyl fencing, existing vegetation. From the parking lot area, looking north, again, black vinyl fencing's been cut away. And from the west, this would be the view that would be through the Carpinteria, the future Carpinteria lift station. So once that facility is constructed, this would not be visible. You'd be looking at the western elevation of the Sanitary District's facility. The applicant also provided photo simulations that once, if the project was constructed, how that would be viewed from these three areas. First, on the northbound lane of the 101, existing situation as viewed, it's down here. And once those facilities, those poles, are constructed, again, adjacent to the existing mature tree, low-profile sites, maximum height of 12 feet. Looking back from northbound 101. And as you are headed southbound on the 101, as you take the exit ramp for Bates Road, The project is exempt from SEQA review pursuant to SEQA Section 15303 for new construction or conversion of small structures. And as designed, the project is consistent with coastal plan policies, including adequate fire and emergency access, currently enjoys electricity services and phone services. There would be no impact to protected biological resources, and uses the existing mature vegetation as additional screening. As discussed within the staff report, there would be no impact to significant cultural resources, as well as no impacts to the existing recreational facility, which includes the parking lot area and beach access. Finally, as situated downslope from that parking lot area and adjacent to the Caltrans 101 corridor, the low-profile facility would not be visually intrusive. As proposed, the project is consistent with the allowable uses in the REC Zone with approval of a major conditional use permit. Can be found compatible with the surrounding uses and complies with the FCC standards. Additionally, the requested setback modification would be justified due to the site sharing with the existing AT&amp;T site, as well as the clustering of utilities, the Sanitary District in the future that's envisioned in that area. Upon review, PND recommends that the commission make the required findings for approval, determine the project is exempt from SEQA, and approve the project, subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ritter back. Any questions? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I was just looking at the S-bar minutes, and that's from 2010. Was the black vinyl fencing part of that original project from 2010? I don't remember it from when we saw it before.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, the Board of Architectural Review did add that. It went before the board several times, and I believe that the last time it went before they determined that the black vinyl siding worked the best because it would fade over time, and then it would blend in a little bit more naturally.
Mr. Reherback, in Condition 12, you speak to the vegetation, obviously from the photo simulations, the existing vegetation is crucial from the aesthetic standpoint of visibility from all those approaches. So I'm concerned that if the tree is damaged or dies, the main eucalyptus tree that's screening all of the existing towers, they would be fairly obvious, even though only 12 feet tall, it would look like an installation. And so Condition 12 starts by saying, existing vegetation shall be preserved and protected to the maximum extent feasible throughout construction activities. So my question is, do you feel this condition is adequate to, long-term, to ensure that vegetation of similar size and screening ability would be planted there?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Condition 12 continues on and discusses that if, in the future, any of that vegetation were to be, or to even die of old age, had it been, had it either been damaged during construction or just died of old age, it is such a key component to this project that the requirement that they replant something of significant, or of comparable size and density to maintain that screening, because it is so essential to the project, it's conditioned there, as well as having permit compliance monitoring on this project. So the long-term compliance with this condition would be ensured. That's the tool that the county would be using, was that long-term permit compliance.
Okay. So just to make a note, I'd like to insert the word promptly in front of replaced so that we emphasize that that vegetation is pretty much ongoing into the future and not limited to damage simply caused by construction. Okay. Do we have somebody here for the applicant?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jerry Ambrose. I'm here on behalf of MetroPCS. I want to thank Jay and the staff for working with us over the past, it's been about 16 months since our last hearing, in addressing the concerns from our last hearing before you. I don't have anything to add to Jay's presentation. We are in agreement with the conditions, as well as the change to add the word promptly. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from commissioners? No. Don't see any. But appreciate all the work you've put in to alleviate the concerns we expressed initially, particularly the cultural issues. So thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Oh, I did have one question, Mr. Ambrose. Why two towers as opposed to one? Is that a coverage question?
Has to do with the tree. If we had both of them on one pole, would have to be on one side or the other, and have to be a significant distance away from that tree. So it would be, it would still... So it would be it would silhouette sort of on its own if it was just one single pole. This allows us to go, the two poles allows us to go around that sort of that apex of Rincon Point and hug, you know, stay tight to the tree.
So really, the the concern about screening the poles means we have to multiply the number of poles?
Well, yeah, that's yeah, right. It's beneficial to have two for screening purposes rather than one, if that's.
That's ironic, but.
In this particular case, that's that's hopefully that makes sense.
It does to me. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Lou, uh, Ms. Lou. Mr. Ritter back, anything further?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, no, staff wouldn't have anything to add. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chair, I have just a question for you on that condition 12. It says trees or shrubs which are significantly damaged or or die as a result of construction activities. I think you're.
Disease or age goes on to.
Oh, does, right, thank you.
Yep, yep, I was looking at that too. Thank you. Okay, not seeing any additional concerns. This is a first district permit and I am prepared to move staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
I just want to add that the changes made today would be a part of that recommendation. Is that okay? Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
And Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right. Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Ambrose, and.
Mr. Chair, can you just clarify for the record that there you didn't have any public comment and there's.
You're right. There the room was empty. Commissioner Blau did not have any speaker slips. There isn't anyone for public comment, so thank you for raising that. Okay, this hearing is concluded then, and we will meet again on September 5, 3, 5? Five, okay, good. See you all then. Enjoy Labor Day weekend.